The first thing is the agenda, which is a correction, confirmatory vote on church and King Street. The issue was last time, I think, two mistakes. One was only five of us were eligible to vote, and Mark was at the table even though he was ineligible. And so I said he needed four votes even though there's only five of us eligible to vote. And the other mistake I made when we were doing it was gathering, and you said, can you abstain because of the issue about the Underground Railroad? And I said, well, if you shouldn't abstain, you can vote no. And that was also a mistake because you can only vote no if there's a legal reason based on the zoning. You can't vote no because of an opinion. You have to vote no based on the zoning. So the fact that that's not our purview means really you shouldn't vote no or something like that.
I can have a position now.
You can have a position.
At least my position, if my position was no, it's my position.
Your personal one.
Right.
But legally, for us as a voting member of the planning board, you pretty much are holding to the zoning ordinances in terms of that should guide your voting.
Yeah, not about the Underground Railroad, but my thoughts about the actual application.
Well, it's not necessarily about the thoughts, it's whether or not the plan, you feel the plan needs the technical requirements of site plan. That's a difference between site plan and special permit. There's less subjectivity, I guess, if you will, with a site plan. But if you feel like it's not meeting the requirements of the site plan, absolutely every one of you can vote no and then specify, this is why I don't think it's meeting the site plan criteria. And then, at that point, you can identify, here's how you can meet the site plan criteria and obtain a site plan from the board or obtain a positive vote from X, Y, or Z member, is if you do these bottom things.
So I can abstain?
Well, I guess it depends on whether, I mean, you can certainly abstain, but you should voice why you're abstaining. If you feel like something doesn't meet the plan criteria or the zoning, you should state that too, so that everyone is aware of what you're thinking in terms of where you think the plan falls short. But because it's site plan and it's very specific, you can really only turn a site plan down if it's not meeting the zoning requirements that are in your jurisdiction. So, for example, something like the issue of whether or not there's historic structure that may be demolished, that's not part of site plan approval. So that wouldn't in and of itself be a reason that legally would withhold appeals at the court level for denying a site plan, because that's under another court jurisdiction. But certainly, anything that falls under the site plan that you don't feel meets the technical requirements, no, these are the reasons. And by the way, if you provide a plan that meets all of these criteria, then you could get an approval.
And I think the same thing with abstaining. I would not abstain for personal reasons. You have to abstain because we're guided by the zoning.
It varies that I'm uncomfortable about with, in terms of the whole plan.
Lots of votes are like that. Right, that's not, you have to, we vote based on the zoning. So we can, we vote on things that sometimes we might not like personally, but that's not our guiding principle. Our guiding principle is the zoning, the laws of the zoning. So that is what guides our vote. Otherwise, it will be appealed, go across the city a lot of money, and the appeal will win.
But the fact is that the number of people over here today is going to pass anyway.
Doesn't matter. You should, you still, your vote has to be guided by the rules of the planning board. That's how you have to vote. So Carol, do you want to read the conditions of the permit?
Yep, you guys. And so, just to clarify again, the original decision has been filed with the clerk, so it's a valid decision. This is just sort of to confirm, because we did have one member that was ineligible but present, and so that could be interpreted as meaning that there was no valid vote either way, up or down. So whatever vote happens today, there are five members, and that's clear, there's not one who's sitting but ineligible. So final plans incorporating conditions herein shall be stamped and submitted to any work on the site to meet the criteria in, let me just scroll down, 350 8.9 APP, two landscaped islands shall be added to the central parking area. At a minimum, the dimension of each of these islands shall be the width of one parking space and a length of two, it's eight and a half by thirty-six. Four additional street trees shall be planted along the frontage. Trees shall be selected from the applicant tree community list. Tree protection measures shall be installed prior to any site work or trees at the entrance. Water and sewer line connections shall be made in accordance with the Department of Public Works standards. In order to provide separated, safe, non-vehicular access for parishioners to the site, a six-foot-wide Batuma's connection from the parking lot to the rail trail should be installed. Construction materials and specifications shall be in accordance with Office of Planning Development or rail trail construction standards. Connection shall be made either on the applicant's property or at the property's owner's choice on the abutting property, but prior to the completion of any portion of the parking lot. Approval of the layout of the parking lot and the two curb cuts is contingent on the rail trail access being provided at the applicant's choice. If they find the rail trail connection is impossible, they can request an amended approval from the planning board showing no rail trail connection, but instead showing only one curb cut and improved pedestrian bicycle connection on the site. These approved plans include a traffic waiver based on a limited weekday use of the new building. If the days of the week in which the building is used changes to functions that occur during the afternoon peak periods, Monday through Friday, for at least fifty percent of those functions, traffic mitigation will be required in accordance with the increase in peak trips generated, as described in the zoning. Upon completion of the parking, the applicant shall submit a stamped lighting plan showing that installed light levels comply with the zoning plan and the plans shown for Central Snow shall be allowed to the rear of the site, and lights shall be turned off within one hour of the last function, and no more than four full lights shall remain on during the night. And then, just also as part of the lighting, you all had discussed, allowing light poles up to eighteen and twenty feet instead of sixteen feet. And that's it.
So the public comment period is closed, so this is just for us. So are there any discussions before we have a motion? Catherine, oh, sorry, Carol, we're going to do, just a moment, we'll have a motion in a second, and then we'll do the vote.
Yeah.
Any discussion before we have a motion?
I guess just a quick question. I mean, if we all vote the same, it's fine. If we change our vote, is it going to make anything more complicated?
No. As long as the decision isn't changed, it doesn't matter that it happened.
But I think, Andrew, in terms of, you had, you had an issue with the interpretation of the zoning, so you were...
Yeah, but I was actually concerned that I did not understand the zoning correctly, and that religious establishments are not actually...
Right. I'm just talking about more of the format of it. So when you were voting no against it last time, you were voting no because of the actual zoning. So that was different, that's where you and Catherine were, were different, so.
Well, I'm also uncomfortable, I mean, I also think of the issue of plantings and shrouds and stuff. I think it goes against the sustainability plan, and I think it does, it's not good planning for the city and that part of the city to have this kind of structure and this kind of a plan. So, you know, I would prefer not to support it for those reasons, not because of the historic structure.
And that's a valid reason. Now, typically during site plan, though, what I would say is, we would try to work with the applicant to resolve those issues. We wouldn't, very rarely will we reject a site plan. We always try to work with the applicant as much as possible till we get to a point where it's something we can vote yes on. So if you had concerns like that, those are things that should be aired during the public comment session, so that the applicant can respond and possibly make it to...
Yeah, I mean, I think they were aired, certainly Andrew talked about that.
Right. But I think you have to, the thing to do is to make it very clear to the applicant that you're still, it still hasn't met the, what you think is something that you can vote yes on.
Well, but I think it's important to understand why you think it might be contrary to the sustainability plan, because special permit definitely has a direct link to a plan. The site plan is really about technical issues in the zoning. So if there's an issue that's both technical and maybe you think doesn't relate to the sustainability plan, those should be aired, because I'm not sure that, I mean, I think your interpretation of something may be interpreted differently by others, so it might be valid to listen to how others might interpret your own concerns about the sustainability plan. So, you know, you could all, I don't know why you think that it's contrary to the sustainability plan, but let's say you think it's a big building on a site or something like that, you know, the argument could also be made that they're consolidating all functions to one location, and the other option might be to move out of town or out on Bridge Road, out of a downtown setting, so, I mean, there's that...
Or other churches, yeah.
Balancing that. But the plan in front of you is what you're voting on, not whether or not...
The amounting impermeable surface, for example, or the planting, or the bike path thing, I think is one of the conditions, so that's...
And again, so the impermeable surface issue is dictated by the zoning, they're meeting the open space requirements so far, so...
And so it's our zoning problem, really. Zoning doesn't reflect sustainability.
Well, maybe, maybe it does. I mean, you know, I think you could build more intensely on the property, but I don't know that we would necessarily have a maximum. I mean, so far, there hasn't been a conversation about having a maximum per, impermeable surface coverage, you know, with one...
What about the setback?
There's no maximum setback. I mean, there, I mean, in Central Business, there is, except the building already exists, the church is already setback further, and the new building is not in Central Business. And so there is no maximum setback for the open road essential infrastructure. And that's another conversation we'll have later tonight, is where should the CD go? But, you know, this one's a works.
But the thing to do is to voice those things that we can discuss them, because sometimes we're going to be able to resolve them, sometimes we won't. Usually, we can resolve them. So the thing to do is voice them, so that the applicant can respond, or Carol and other people on the board can respond, so that everybody's aware. Any other discussion on this? Does anybody want to make a motion? I think Rand here.
I didn't make the vote.
I don't have the old, you want to read it?
Yeah. Start it up there.
Well, given last year, the continuation, so I don't have the...
Well, the address is 91 King Street, St. Elizabeth and Seaton Church. The charter of fourteen thousand square foot building at 91 King Street.
Okay, so I move that we accept the site plan submitted for 91 King Street for St. Elizabeth and Seaton Church, with the conditions that we mentioned. Any discussion?
You're saying I cannot abstain, is that what you said?
I think you should, well, I think you should probably state the reasons why you're abstaining. But if you're really opposed to a project, you should make a vote and also state why you're, the same reason why you would state why you're in favor of a project, or, so in either scenario, I think that it would be appropriate to do that.
So this is the time to make your statement, if you're abstaining, before we vote.
My reasons have to do with this, my feeling that this is a counter to the principles of the planning for the city and for the sustainability plan, but I've been told that that's not a reason to say no, because it's not a specific foundation of a particular aspect of the zoning ordinance.
Right, and I think you, to abstain for general reasons that you can't articulate as to why is not necessarily a good way. To say it's the setbacks are wrong, the plantings are wrong, you couldn't resolve issues, that I think is a fine thing, but a general feeling or a thought, I really think you have to be very clear, because you're sending a message to an applicant, because if it was rejected, then the applicant has to know how that they would be able to come back into compliance. And if it's, so you're not giving them any guidance. And the same thing is when we're having the public comment discussion, if you say, I don't think I can vote for it because I generally don't feel it meets the sustainability plan, well, they don't know how to fix it to make it so that it does. So you have to be very clear. And so if you're going to abstain, I would like you to be extremely clear as to why, or if you're going to vote no, extremely clear, because the applicant has to know.
And I think I haven't been told that I should have brought that all up during the open, the discussion, public discussion.
You should, because the applicant can respond. We have many conditions that we had, the traffic islands, the plantings, they're very, the applicant was very amenable to a lot of the changes, and we had, we were in here for three hours, two weeks ago, and three hours, six months ago, working with them on this plan. And they were very amenable, we're willing to compromise on a lot of things, but if they don't know what, what the things are that you're having a problem with, they can't address them. And most of the time, in the time I've been on the planning board, applicants are very willing to address concerns in order to move ahead. So I think you have to be extremely clear, both during the public comment session or now, as to why you think you would abstain or vote no. So that's, and it has to be based on the zoning, a personal opinion or conscience or a feeling.
Or even the...
Sustainability?
Sustainability plan.
Right, so that's, I think, an important aspect of it, so. So we're, anything else before we vote, or is that, all right? Do you have a second? All right, so any other comments on this? So there's five of us, I'm going to be very clear, we have five.
It's a majority of us.
We need a majority, we need three. So I would say all in favor? Five, any opposed? No, so unanimous. So now, there is no ambiguity, congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
People can smile, it's over. So the next thing on the agenda is to revisit proposed King Street ordinances and review the Nelson Nagar report.
Yeah, can we...
Oh, that's right, we're going to do the planned village, show what we should see.
Or we can, yeah, so can we pull that up on the screen, because I don't know if everybody has it?
I think, I'm not sure if those guys are outside, let me just take, wait a minute.
Did we get anything on planned village?
It was a couple of weeks ago.
Oh.
I'll put it up on the screen.
So we're just going to, the agenda, the next thing on the agenda was to revisit King Street, but we're waiting for Wayne, so we're going to just flip it and quickly do planned village, what did?
Quickly or not, quickly.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to do this. Okay. So the plan, the changes for planned village are sort of, again, the next in the series of things. Okay. And, my turn, I have the light, too.
I'll get it.
Thanks, Ben. So the idea is, I don't know if you'll be able to read, oh, I can zoom in on parts, but the idea is to, we're going through all these tables in terms of revising all the tables and merging them. So you saw the first series a few weeks ago, and they're sort of coming up as we get to them. And planned village has risen to the top for a couple of reasons. One is the bundle of lots that were already approved as part of the subdivision on the Motor Street Loop, kind of far west side of the State Hospital property, are small lots that were approved as sort of smaller lots to try to be, to try to come in at the market rate, affordable, affordability price range, and the idea was to create much smaller lots so they, you would have much smaller units, and that would sort of come in at that price point. So the planning board approved sort of conceptually in the special permit that that's, that was an appropriate way to move and sort of try to get it, all sorts of, the whole spectrum of housing prices and affordability at the State Hospital. The Citizens Advisory Committee also voted on this. When it came through for subdivision, we didn't, we failed to go back to the zoning and look that there's actually a sixty-foot frontage minimum for lots in all, throughout the entire campus. And that was put in place five, seven, actually, more than that, eight, nine years ago, based on a request by Mass Development, they wanted a minimum frontage requirement. So we put that in in the first run of zoning, but the problem now, why it needs to be addressed, is those lots are planned for forty-four to fifty-four foot frontages. Some go up to over sixty, but a majority of them are less than the current zoning frontage requirement. So that really needs to be addressed for those lots to be built out. The other thing in the planned village, if you've ever looked at it closely, it's kind of hard to understand, because it was developed so many years ago before any project had happened up here, and we wanted to distinguish between people who came in under the current zoning that was there, who might have had a single-family house lot potential, but were not part of the overall master plan. So the language right now is a bit confusing. So we are hoping that this change in the table addresses that by specifically saying, here's how you develop, for instance, a single-family home, we develop outside a master plan for mixed-use development, and you have one lot size requirement, which is a standard urban residential B requirement, except for set, front setbacks, but the frontage is seventy-five feet, the depth is eighty, and then distinguish that from lots that are built within the context of the overall master plan. We probably won't have any lots at this point up at the State Hospital anymore that will be built out outside of the master plan, but we still, we're going to leave that in there, because it is possible that we might use the planned village district elsewhere in the city at some point. So if we apply the planned village district elsewhere in the city, that would accomplish that. But at any rate, this table sort of adjusts, mostly adjusts lot sizes and frontages from existing conditions, and otherwise, it's sort of reorganization, trying to make the language clearer about when you're building on your own, outside of a master planned project, and when you're building within the context of a master planned project. And the big, the two big changes are, so this one right here, any residential structure or mix thereof as part of an overall master plan project, this column on the second page would say lot size zero and frontage width and depth and setbacks are zero, because this would allow them maximum flexibility possible for someone coming in and building out multiple blocks at a time or planning, master planning a large site, that they would have flexibility to have different sized lots in different locations, and you all would still review it as part of site plan or part of the special permit if they came in as one package, but you wouldn't want to, the idea is that the zoning doesn't dictate the lot layout ahead of time before someone has a chance to look at a, you know, huge block of land with all the topographic challenges and siting and that kind of thing. So that's the big, one of the big changes in this. And then, the way that I've suggested wording it is, and I'll see if I can blow it up here a little bit, so you can read it on the screen, is that the idea for the planned village is really that you, so you're, you're planning a village, so you want to have adequate vehicular and pedestrian connections, and that it's not just sort of a standard, a way to easily throw in house lots without road or other infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, so that there's still a standard that you have to create sort of a village network that allows circulation, multimodal circulation through the system, so it's not that you're just getting to build out houses without roads, but it just is a way to provide more flexibility. And the place, in Central Business, we have zero, we have zero frontage requirements and zero lot size requirements. Obviously, the streets are already created, so it's easier to sort of look at where you might be able to carve out new parcels within an already existing network of infrastructure. But when you have a blank slate, we wouldn't want it to be interpreted that you would just have houses strewn, you know, far away from infrastructure with no connectivity. So I think this is a key point that, you know, you wouldn't want misinterpreted to be that there are no rules about sort of layout and function and the concept that you're trying to create with a planned village. And there's, the language would still remain in the other section for the special permit of planned village about the concept behind creating a planned village. So I think this is one thing that would probably be important for you to discuss. And I don't know if you want me to go through the whole thing and then come back and talk about this stuff, or if you want me to, if you want to stop and discuss these bits and then move on to the next.
Move on to the next?
The next big change in the planned village.
Any questions?
Is everything else in this tabulation, basically, everything, nothing's changed other than the changes you're going to go over with us, everything's just being reformatted to make it consistent with the other tables that you've been producing?
The other, there was, there's a change to the parking, a maximum parking, two per unit, and we, I mean, the whole idea of the planned village is obviously to have shared parking when possible and not create, you know, massive amounts of spaces that aren't used. And you have at various times granted site plans for reduction in parking, particularly on the South Campus for the business uses. So that's another added permit requirement that's been necessary for some of those projects to go forward.
Question? Is there a minimum requirement? It says minimum parking at the top, and you say what the maximum is.
Yes. Well, I, what I'm suggesting in this is that there's no minimum, because you'll be, you'll be looking at this as a mass, this is again, the section that talks about looking at overall development. So when someone comes in and plunks down a project and says, here's how I want to lay everything out, and here's the parking I think is necessary to meet this residential use and to meet the commercial use, then you all have the chance to evaluate it at that time, and the applicant's then pitched to you that they need X, Y, and Z number of parking spaces, and you can improve it. So as opposed to saying there's a minimum requirement, why not just let the applicant come in and say, this is what I think I need? But also, the idea is, you don't want to just allow them to have, you know, ten visitor spaces per unit, because that's what they think they need, so...
It should be maximum, though.
Right, but the other, the other thing is, I mean, yes, it could be maximum, but there are other uses that maybe, where it's not suggested to be a maximum, so...
Or maybe it could just say parking, and then say maximum.
Okay.
Because, it confuses me completely.
Okay. I'll send here to describe it. Can you turn on one of the lights, too?
We don't have...
This is the only...
Not currently, no.
And so, you know, I'm not well versed in, so... What's to, someone who's saying, I really want, I really like to build in a subdivision, but I'm going to call it a planned village, so that I can get all the flexibility, I don't have to do the same things I would if I were, you know, I don't have to have the frontage, I don't have to have, you know...
Well, it has to be zoned as a planned village.
Yeah, but this is a zoning area, so there's only one area...
You can't self-define themselves as a planned village.
Okay, so it has, it's designated before...
Right, so someone might come in and say, I have an idea for, I mean, frankly, there aren't that many places in the city that could happen. Years ago, we thought potentially, maybe up at the DA, but now that there's... Years ago, we thought potentially, maybe up at the DA, but now that there's, the times have changed, wars have changed, we're probably going to the DA for a long time. But that might have been another place. So, then we'd have to come in and zone that specifically for Planned Village, it's S R U R A or something like that. And then you, the idea would be, the city policy was saying, this is where it makes sense to have a village kind of center, a village mixed-use development.
Go over again for me, why do you need the distinction between the large group, which would then have the flexibility to design its parking and its access, and it's compared to a different set of rules that would apply to a pre-existing house, is that what it is?
Yeah, or a pre-existing lot that may be, so this would be the case where, and I think this happened for State Hospital, is when the zoning first was applied, it was actually an overlay just before it became this underlying district. But there were, I think, a few lots, parcels that were included in it that were owned or owned by, that had houses on them. And so, the idea was if someone individually wanted to go and rebuild, but it was within the boundaries of the zone, they could do that under these other parameters without coming in as an overall redevelopment of the, of the whole site. So, the same thing might apply, we put it, we took an area of the city and we said, okay, this is an area, conceptually, where we want a Planned Village, and we want to maximize those boundaries, and maybe there's one or two house lots there already owned by, maybe there's two or three owners within that area. So, if someone opted to build a single-family house, that's what you would build outside of a Planned Village.
What I'm thinking about is if you wanted to take an existing house, it was, say, a wonderful Victorian, and turn that into a common-use structure for the new Planned Village, is that fitting right to this one?
Well, it wouldn't fit on this line, it would come in and we would say, yes, we're going to incorporate this existing house into the overall master plan development.
Oh, sorry, no, I'm just, oh, so, so, sorry. You want to do the second change?
Yeah, so, the other one is, let me see if I can find it, has to do with common driveways. And everything else here is allowed, or I may have added things like cell towers and things like that, but they're the same standards we have in every other district. I'm just trying to find the common driveway section. Shared driveway? Yeah, where is this?
Do you think, right, yeah, there.
Okay. So, shared driveway serving residential lots as part of an approved master plan, driveways may be designed consistently with Village Center development that do not meet the standards in 352.2 for shared driveways, when in the view of the fire chief, there's adequate emergency access. So, I don't know if you remember, but, well, currently, our shared driveway standards are, and were probably written for more suburban locations, and not in areas where you've got short distances between the street and homes or garages, and certainly in Village Centers or something like, you know, downtown. This has come up in sort of thinking about development of the North Campus and beyond, and the issue of wanting to share driveways, but the driveway widths are 15 feet to start with, and then with a 20-foot width for sections for pullouts. And so, if you can imagine, that eats up a lot of land when you're talking about 44-foot frontage lots, for example, or even 60-foot frontage lots. So, the idea is to maybe reevaluate common driveways in this setting only. And just to go back a little bit for those of you who may have forgotten or weren't on the board, the lot, the 11 lots on Olander, which are the single-family house lots that are now basically all sold, some of those have common driveways, and they came in, those driveways are 10 feet wide, and they were approved as part of 40R, which is not zoning. So, the planning board had the flexibility to allow whatever they proposed because that's how 40R works. And so, there is precedent already at the State Hospital for having narrower common driveways, and clearly, I mean, the whole concept about requiring pullouts is because you might have a long windy driveway, you can't see someone coming down the driveway. But in a Planned Village, when you have those lots lined up, you know when your neighbor's coming down the driveway. So, you all didn't have a problem at all with approving the reduced width for those shared driveways. And so, this would sort of institutionalize it essentially in the zoning, and allow that as part of the site plan or the overall master plan. And so, that's the other big thing that I think would make sense in this area, but again, you want to make sure it's part of the overall development that you're reviewing and not just randomly lumped out at a time.
It's part of the overall development that we're reviewing. In every instance, will development within a Planned Village come in front of us as a special permit, or?
So, right, so the overall, the creation of a Planned Village requires, so this master plan, mixed-use villages, requires a planning board special permit, which is not labeled here, but I think it's under the special permit column, so it's planning board. And then as part of that, it's site plan.
Right. But the next page I'm concerned about, just, the next page, page two, the first six, seven things don't require by the chart either site plan or special permit. And I'm thinking, worst-case scenario, what if somebody came, or we didn't see a development, where they had setbacks were minimum, parking was minimum, and it didn't adequately meet the needs of, of the housing units or whatever, but, but we never got a chance to review that? Or we only see it as a site plan review, and we can't, as long as they're meeting, you know, minimum setbacks and minimum parking, we can't say anything about it, even though we know it doesn't meet the needs of the development you want to meet?
Well, the intention, I guess, is sort of, I do what you, I do know what you mean. I think the intention in this drafting was to make sure, I mean, overall, the, the way the State Hospital is built out is not typically how many master plans are built out. They usually come in one permit at a time and maybe some peaking later on. Because this is such a long build-out, the whole overall master plan is special permitted first, and then they're doing individual site plans resection. So, I guess, I, this envisions having at least site plan review once the special permit concept is approved, or special permit for the whole ten villages approved.
I guess I'm saying, we've approved the special permit for the village, and now you're chugging along and doing individual site plan reviews for little developments. And, but during the course of that, we're changing the requirements, or proposing to change the requirements. And so, again, I'm just saying, if somebody comes in front of us for a site plan review, and they meet the requirements of this with no parking or minimum parking, and skinny drive, shared driveways, and no setbacks, and it meets this, and it's obviously not a good fit, but we can't reject it because they're meeting these requirements, then it seems like we lose leverage.
Why don't they all, didn't it says, as, all of them say, as part of an overall master plan, all, one, two, three, four?
The way I read this chart, that's the landscaping or the building design, not the, not the, like the first one on page two, top left, any residential structure meets thereof. The way I read this, you don't need site plan, you don't need special permit, and you might need it for your landscaping design or your building design, but.
Oh, the fact that it says as part of a master plan, you don't think is good enough?
Well, that's what I'm asking, does that?
Yeah, that's, the intention was, it was part of that overall package, that you could just come in outside of that master plan.
So, every time there's a mini-development within, or a further extension of the master plan, it would come in front of us under the overall global purview of this initial special permit?
Right, and then, and in this, I would say, rather unique circumstance at State Hospital, it's going to require a site plan at a minimum because they never got an overall site plan. Typically, when, maybe I shouldn't talk about typical because we don't have another Planned Village to bounce off of, but the idea would be that you do it all as one package. And here, it's being parceled out because it's such a long build-out, so they're doing site plan by site plan. But you have the conceptual master plan that is approved, so you can sort of go back and look at that to see how it fits in.
So, if somebody comes in front of us and the site plan meets all these new requirements, minimum setback, no parking, skinny driveways.
Right.
But we know that technically it's right, and that's all we're looking at in the site plan, but in the global picture, it's wrong, can we fall back in that review on the special permit and say, okay, that's all?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions on this? Do you think it's wise to have no, parking minimum of zero, no parking required, in residential areas? I have just, no questions for the board?
I would support that as part of the master plan, because it means you can have flexibility to provide, and people who might want to live in off, you know, they don't actually have to have cars. I think that's, that's a worthy goal.
Well, they don't have to use it, I think.
I would agree, I, I think if the fallback is that master plan, and it fits within that, then I would be okay with it. As long as we have the opportunity to, if it doesn't fit within that plan, we have the opportunity to require it.
I think the reality is, from what we've heard and seen from a marketing perspective or financing, that the world isn't quite ready to accept no parking in outlying areas, but even in central business, where we've gotten feedback from people that they can't build something downtown without any parking because the world would come to a halt. But, so I think the, the reality is, there's always going to be some parking, so, because, so it's not going to be necessary, I don't think you'll see a project that comes in with zero parking, frankly, but if they could.
I'd hope that gets the 10 bucks a gallon.
Right, so.
The, the Smith property behind the Senior Citizen Center, that whole building, I mean, that's an area where I could, and you might end up with a Planned Village in some six, eight, 10 years from now, and that's close enough to walk downtown. But I agree, you'd have to have some planned parking in the development, but maybe not by units.
Yeah.
If there's a parking lot.
So, the, the other sort of thing is that, just, and you've seen this with the industrial districts and, and users, and especially a lot of the portable housing developments, they know their clientele, and their, the clientele doesn't necessarily have cars, but we still have this minimum parking requirement. And so, the apartments up there, I think, I'm probably going to mistake the numbers, I think it's 33 units, but the parking lots are not full up there. So, you've got this open parking lot where it's, you know, just sort of sitting there. And so, I think the idea is to avoid something like that.
Anybody else? Are those the only two, those two?
Yeah, well, yeah, the parking, the lot, the frontage.
And the driveway. So, you're looking for a vote, so this is going to go to City Council?
Well, so, what, what I want, you know, discussion of, do you think this is the right direction, should we move forward, and would you sponsor it for introduction, and then I would put it in the ordinance form and send it along to be introduced, and then it will come back.
Then it will come back, so like, all the tables we've been doing, this will go to City Council, you'll put it back out, and back to us again, so we'll see it.
Well, the process where it comes back up?
We have a joint meeting with the ordinance subcommittees of the council.
Okay.
So, we're, we'll see this again at least once.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm not, I don't know, the, the version of this that I had is dated April 8, and I guess there's a more recent version that must have got emailed to us or something?
I didn't email anything out since then.
Does Mark have one that's dated the 14th?
That may have been just fine printed. Oh, no, it's the date for 14.
The date, uh.
Mine's dated, I think it's the date you printed, because 414 was our last meeting, you probably printed it before the last meeting, mine's 411, because I printed it.
Oh, okay.
That's very similar.
It might just be the date you printed.
Have they, I'm not update, feel them there, it's probably what happened.
I thought we established that these things, they have a version date on them.
There is a date in the corner.
Yeah, so yours is today, so, every time you open up that file, that's the date. But, so this hasn't been modified since the last time you sent email to us. Everybody?
Tonight, we've got stuff.
I think I wrote it in.
All right.
I don't want it to be a surprise to you.
Just state your reasons clearly and concisely. So, what we need, any board, so we're going to need a motion to move this on, any further discussion of this before we move it out, or vote to move it out, actually. Any other questions?
I literally vote to endorse the proposed changes to the Planned Village ordinance.
Okay.
So, you want to introduce it, vote to introduce it?
I vote to introduce.
And sponsor it.
Sponsor it, whatever.
As long as your secondor takes it as a friendly amendment.
I do.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? So, it's unanimous. All right, so Wayne, you can join us at the table. So, the next thing on the agenda is revisit proposed King Street ordinances and review the Nelson Nygaard report. Wayne, Carolyn, who's going to be doing the Nelson Nygaard?
He.
So, um.
Are the lights dimmed, or are you doing an overhead?
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah, two.
Just one.
Yes, how many of you went to?
Yeah, perfect, that's nice.
Final presentation? Right, so, so we just sort of looked at, what are the issues remaining to be resolved on King Street in terms of your past assessments, as well as what are things they might want to revisit based on what we learned from the Nelson Nygaard. So, I'm just going to run through these, and I don't know if you want to go through the whole thing, or if you want to discuss as we go along.
Is this the discussion's email for us this afternoon with 441, more or less?
No, you didn't get this.
We haven't seen it.
What was something presented by Wayne?
There's zoning, as you already referred to, it was just another copy of it, because.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have, I couldn't find the King Street, so she reset us to King Street.
So, I figured if Stephen didn't have it, then.
I, I couldn't, no.
Right, well, I brought you a copy, a special Catherine Baker copy.
So, the goal today is deliberately not to discuss the zoning in incredible detail because what we want to do is sort of step back a little bit, even work line by line in zoning. Nelson Nygaard opens up some possibilities that are worth visiting, so before we spent time sort of codifying that, we wanted to go through at a, you know, thousand feet up and have a discussion, and get a sense of where you want to go, and then we can come back in the next meeting with specific zoning. So, you two have seen this, or different versions of this, what we're trying to do, we're trying to make King Street work for everybody, so work for all modes of travel, but all kinds of economic development, and, you know, the neighborhoods behind, so it's not trying to be just a highway strip, but also not trying to be a downtown.
Can I point out that it's the wrong kind of principle?
Yes, you may. I'll switch sides of it. So, I'm going to, we just walk up King Street from south to north and talk about where it seems like we are and what are the issues that remain to be done. So, we think that from Main Street to Trumbull, which is already central business, that there seems to be agreement for everybody, and everybody being you all's board, the charrette process that we did at the old fire station with the Chamber of Commerce and the zoning revisions group and the planning board, and it seemed like you went through, this is a lot of specific language you've been talking about, keeping it central business, did the management change, et cetera. So, unless there's questions, I'm not going to spend time in that section. You know, suffice to say that what Nelson Nygaard was saying is, we could do some traffic calming, if you will, there, but it wouldn't look dramatically different. But in essence, King Street, in this section, which is one lane each direction, is a little bit wider than it needs to be. The lanes are wider, and we can recapture some of that extra real estate to make the sidewalks wider. And so, it just becomes, then, should a pedestrian friendly place, there's a couple ways to do it, this is sort of existing additions, these are their numbers, these aren't exact numbers, obviously, King Street varies from place to place. And so, they were saying, well, one option is you could do some painting if you wanted to narrow the lanes immediately, adding bike lanes. It may actually not be a good place for bike lanes, frankly, because you'd be putting the bike lanes right in the door zone, in a place where there's a bike path that's 100 feet away, and where most bikes will keep up with traffic anyway. So, it, its main benefit might be to narrow the street, and that, again, as you've been to Nelson Nygaard, I've seen these slides, but the long term is widening the sidewalk. And so, the opportunity here is to really, you know, recapture the sidewalk and make the sidewalk more pedestrian-friendly. And so the opportunity here is to really, you know, recapture the sidewalk and make the sidewalk more pedestrian friendly. So that's true up to Trumbull, and that's pretty easy and they give consensus here. From Trumbull to north, the same cross sections that Nelson Nygaard did still apply. So you still have the opportunities from that section up to north to make Main Street more attractive by widening the sidewalks. Without losing parking, without losing the road traffic. So just think about it in the back of your mind. If we were thinking originally when we did the earlier discussion, from Main Street to north, there might be other tricks we do to make the sidewalks wider. That is basically getting some prop, some land from private property owners. It looks like the road profile is wide enough that we don't need to do that. So that's sort of one of the main findings from this. So as of the last discussion that you all had, it seemed like there's consensus, there was consensus for that section from Trumbull to north. Should the entrance business, the dimensional change you talked about, the use changes you talked about, there seemed to be consensus there. And what seemed not to be consensus was the second floor. Would you require a second floor? How far are you to that?
We had the other one with drive-through.
Drive-through, okay. All right, you don't have that slide. But what the Nelson Nygaard issue opens up is some opportunities. So one issue, as I say, is, we talked about entrance business for this area, thinking that you needed to get more land from the sidewalk for the private buildings, private businesses. If you don't need that property, that might reopen, sort of looking at other things. The other issue is, one of the reasons for it going to entrance business and not central business was concern about not having enough parking in the area. But Nelson Nygaard's point is, there's some real opportunities for increased on-street parking. Right now, on-street parking on the east side of the street goes from downtown to about the middle of the church property. And then there's the parking end stuff. And they're saying, well, if we really want to narrow the lanes, we really have an opportunity to add parking from the church, basically all the way up to North Street. The first block beyond the church, you could narrow it just by putting parking in the street right now. The second block is a right turn lane only onto North Street that they don't think is really necessary. That inside, so this is from the suburban, the south. So you only see a little bit of us. So you see on the right side, the bottom right, that's the old Armory building. But you can see sort of on that right side, parking in what used to be, what right now, so it's a right turn. And so that opens up some issues. Edwards Square, you're re-talking about in Tuppence, right?
Yeah.
So Edwards Square, which right now is a private road, is in the process of petitioning the city to become a public road. As soon as a public road, one option is to allow residents only parking there. And frankly, regardless of doing King Street, probably should do that. But that's, that benefit would reduce sort of neighborhood stability. So, you know, it opens up a potential solution to deal with the neighborhood parking issues. Again, it opens up the potential for not needing the bigger setbacks. So one thing which staff has been thinking about is, maybe it's worth revising doing central business up to North Street. And that deals with some of the height issues. Because, you know, up to North Street, except for Kevin's barbershop and Dunkin' Donuts, everybody's already two-story buildings.
Everybody's what?
Everybody's already a two-story building. So one option is to go up to central business into that section. And that sort of makes the two-story issue go away. Chamber of Commerce, you've got a lot of county stuff.
Yep.
So, you know, they're still concerned about, then should be entrance business. And we want it to be entrance business until both parking issues are dealt with. And when I'm calling bid-type services, in downtown, we have, the bid picks up trash and clears snow and those kinds of things. And then the other comment the chamber had generally is being cautious about changes following Nelson Nygaard's report, because in some areas, narrowing the road is really hard to change in my later, if traffic increases. So we're looking at that and saying that some areas where that's as important, sort of in this particular area, we wouldn't be dropping any lanes anyway. So it seems like you could do the road narrowing and not lose any options in the future. The traffic volumes from downtown up to Stop and Shop are much lower than traffic volumes from Stop and Shop north. So from Stop and Shop north, it's a legitimate issue, you really can't, if we're talking about road dying, going from four lanes to three lanes. From Stop and Shop north, it's a legitimate issue to be very careful how quickly we go until we know the three lanes will work. But Stop and Shop south, we have much lower traffic volumes.
I would have thought it was all the way towards Frank on the corner.
No, we're about sixteen thousand cars. From downtown up to Stop and Shop is about sixteen thousand cars. And all the studies of road dieting are, piece of cake to go to twenty thousand cars. Some towns are going beyond twenty thousand. North of Stop and Shop would go up to twenty-two thousand cars. So, you know, we would certainly, it's certainly been done before, but we would be on the really high end of North of Stop and Shop.
Is that per day or per night?
That's per day. And King Street's actually a little better than some places, because some places have a clear path the cars go during rush hour. So Route nine eastbound in the morning and Route nine westbound in the afternoon, going through Hadley, is very clear. King Street has traffic going in both directions. So the place you could push the numbers is probably King Street, but nonetheless, twenty-two thousand cars alone. So in this section, so sort of discussions for you to think about. I'm sorry, I'm going too far. So discussions for you to think about, sort of which approach is there here? Do you still work on the entrance business in this section, Trumbull to north? Do you want to switch to central business and stuff? Do you want to discuss on each section, Steve? You're going to go through the whole thing for me?
I don't know. Do you want to hear the whole thing and then we'll talk about it? I kind of want to get a whole, I mean, I'd like to get a whole sense of what's...
Okay. So this next section, north and summer, up to where the rail trail crosses. Again, at the charrette, the consensus that came out is entrance business, dimensional changes, use changes. What wasn't resolved is second floor, and here I have the drive-throughs, but you seem to have it further down. And here's the section, you know, it's the same sort of profile view here. Here it is, four lanes. Nelson Nygaard is showing this area going to three lanes. You know, one lane each direction and a left turn lane. And this area, putting on-street parking. Because here's the area, remember in entrance business, the idea is to get buildings up to the street. So in this area, on-street parking would really benefit the businesses. Once you have to hire a business, it probably wouldn't do you any good anyway. But here it could really benefit. And again, the volume of traffic is lower here. So doing road dieting here, and yet you're not up to the limits in some other communities. So road dieting here seems easier in a lot of ways. You know, a classic example you all can think about and look at is, go south on King Street by Soren's Savings Bank, and then follow that down to North Street. And it's two lanes, southbound, but there's an enormous amount of weaving. People go into the left lane to get by cars turn right. As soon as they go by that, they go into the right lane. And so it's, you know, going to one lane probably actually increases capacity as opposed to decreasing capacity here. And then, so, you know, the road dieting part seems, and this lies what he was showing in terms of on-street parking, it seems that the volumes are manageable here, so road dieting is less of a challenge here. The other reason that this is sort of linked... Sorry, I got it. The other reason is it's sort of linked to the thing south of North Street is a whole debate about, can entrance business require a second floor? I think that's mostly a debate about Trumbull to North Street. So my assumption, that you kind of are wrong, is that if Trumbull to north became central business, then the debate for entrance business goes away. At north of North Street is pretty easy to say, one story is the real estate.
Well, the thing that always makes it confusing is the Honda lot. Because a lot of people look at that as a potential for multi-story development. Commercial, retail on the first floor, residential or office above that. So it's hard to say that north of North Street is not a big issue because that parcel, we've heard a lot of them, people want a multi-core building.
If you made the Honda lot is in the part that you propose to make part of the central business?
No, I, my assessment is central business is up to North Street. I think it's great to think about the option for Honda lot being multi-story. I think it's unrealistic to think the market's really going to go there. And I think it's insane to require, I mean, allowing is great. To me, it, to me, right now, it feels central business-y up to North Street. So I like the idea of being central business around there. I don't think you'd get that kind of development Honda, which is empty for a while longer. Allowed is great, but...
Do you get rid of entrance business by doing it that way?
No, I said entrance business from North Street, we shrink it.
We just shrink it?
For what?
Yeah, we go from North Street up to where the bike path goes.
To the bike path, so that's very small.
What prompted the initial line of demarcation for Trumbull Road versus North Street in the first place? Yeah, two issues. At least, I can talk more about what prompted me to think it made sense before, maybe prompted me not to make the, think it makes sense now. There may be other issues as well. One was, one of the goals of entrance business was to have a setback requirement. Relatively small setback requirement, or setback requirement. Thinking that the sidewalks are really narrow on King Street there. We wanted the building set back to create an opportunity to widen the sidewalks. Nelson Nygaard sort of couldn't see, we don't need that real estate. We can widen the sidewalks by taking it from the road rather than by taking it from the space. So that's one issue. The other issue is that if it's central business, we don't require parking. We might have some uses that have less parking. Is that going to create more of an impact on the neighborhood? But again, if we can get more on-street parking. On-street parking is always the most desirable parking, both from a design standpoint and also from a business standpoint. Downtown with the most expensive parking rates has the lowest vacancy rate in the street. People like on-street parking. So those are two things that's what made me persuade me to move.
But, and I think during a lot of the discussions we got, as Wayne said, that people who live in neighborhoods, but if you did expand such a business up to say more, their concerns are people, you know, parking on their streets and wherever, you know, making up all the parking.
It's only really Edwards though, right? Bar and Bright, I guess, too.
Well, any of the streets, as you're going north, the west side are public parking. You know, sometimes it's one side of the street and the other.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, people...
But I mean, change, this change, this little gap of change from...
Oh, right, just coming over, right. That would be central business.
But also currently, it's general business in where we don't require a reevaluation of parking if you're reusing the existing footprint of the building. So it would take a lot to, I mean, so you could change from a residence to a medical office building right now in one of those houses and not have to provide any more parking under current conditions.
And we don't get a lot of tear downs. That's generally our pattern. People who are moving businesses up there are relatively small businesses. They're using refraining structure, not tearing it down.
This is the last part, is that you are, do you keep going a foot and a foot?
Yeah, I think you go a foot. So then north, again, it seemed like there was consensus that should still be high business. It should still be primarily, you know, auto-oriented. I thought you agreed on dimensional changes, the use changes. The issue where there's still some disagreement is the pedestrian access itself. You know, how wide is the sidewalk and how wide is the landscaping along the sidewalk? And what are the setbacks from the sidewalk?
I thought we pretty much resolved those.
It wasn't a planning board issue so much, I think that was raised in the chamber memo.
Oh, chamber issue, okay.
Memo, and then I think it's really relates more to the Nelson Nygaard, maybe rethinking about the width.
Right.
What about, wasn't the bike, was there some idea of multi-use trains?
That's right. So in terms of the public realm piece, so here's Nelson Nygaard again. This is existing conditions. The numbers aren't exactly right, again, the profile changes. But, you know, we basically, two lanes each direction. We have what's a shoulder most. It's not a bike lane, but you know, you're a narrow shoulder right there. And we insert an in-between option. So this is sort of existing conditions. This one was not the Nelson Nygaard report, but it was, let me jump up. Nelson Nygaard was saying this. They were saying road dieting here. Suzanne's letter points out, and I think it's a valid point, that here's a place we have to be careful in terms of road dieting. I'm still a strong advocate for it, but I get that, you know, we spent a fair amount of time since they were here, sort of searching around the country and trying to find the models. And there are some people at our road volumes, primarily San Francisco and New York, but not a lot. And not to the strip areas. So we were sort of playing with, well, is there another in-between option? And one of the in-between options is an aggressive road, aggressive traffic calming road dieting, but potentially still leaving two lanes there. So narrow lanes, ten feet is certainly not unheard of in a lot of places. No shoulders, so you go ten feet right to a granite curb, which means cars, you know, are going to slow down there. And then you squeeze in, narrow a cycle track that standards allow. The numbers are actually, this is rounding errors, that with one foot is the shoulder. And the standards we found are, a foot and a half is the smallest you want for a shoulder and then a four and a half for a cycle track overall. So the idea of being, not that we go this way, maybe you can still do road dieting, but the idea is saying, you could do all the private development from the existing curb line back that we're talking about. And then we get some internal debate, is this go forth? And it may be in pieces, it may be when Peoples Bank comes in for, at the corner of Barrett and King, you're going to ask them to put a cycle track like this and do a treatment for a short section and we may eventually rebuild it. But the main reason this exercise is thinking, are we losing the option to keep King Street at four lanes if we need to? And it seems like there are ways to do that. So again, sort of, you know, I like that.
So that central lane with the trees in it that was part of Nelson Nygaard, that's reducing into three lanes?
Three lanes, right.
And that's where, why is that problematic?
Well, it's not prob, I mean, there's not a lot of examples of it being done, particularly in commercial quarters. There's more in urban areas. You know, certainly Manhattan has it, and San Francisco has it, is the leaders of it. Seattle, which is sort of the one who's been leading a lot of these in more urban areas, has done this at twenty-one thousand and up to twenty-two thousand. So it's not that we're the first people. It's an area that I understand, we'd understand and we want to be cautious. And I'm not trying to ask you to necessarily make a decision at this, but in showing this option, what I was trying to say is, it seems like, with all the stuff we're talking about, private property, there's an option here. You know, whether we go to two lanes, very narrow lanes, or three lanes, you know, you don't have to decide, you're not concluding something.
This sort of effects of this scenario, if you notice, the sidewalk is in, within the eighty-foot right-of-way is five feet. And so the currently, the zoning on the table has been to do a shared use path that's twelve feet. So this is really saying, there's another way to look. We know more about the right-of-way dimensions and how we could do road dieting within that, but it doesn't, you could still get a separated bicycle access and keep those two modes separated and then have a narrower sidewalk. So you're not eating into the private property as much with that twelve-foot shared path.
I mean, here's the...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The ten-foot road, I actually read the Mass DOT standards a couple of weeks back. And I know they didn't want just ten-foot roadwoods right up against a granite curb because then you're driving, they also wanted like a foot and a half for gutter and manholes and drains and all of that stuff. Which you can take out with a bike path if you put the bike path on the road, but not if you put it on the other side of the curb.
Well, there's a bunch, let me, actually, it's a perfect time to thank you for the lead. I just want to quickly, while we're talking about cycle tracks, just, these are just sort of stuff off the internet and presentations I've seen. But there's a lot of different models for how these things can be. So you can do, and the main key in a cycle track is that it's physically separate. But it doesn't have to be continuous curb. So the low-budget version of this is breaks the cycle, the version on the right, which is at the elevation of the road with a, a curb in the middle.
So my question wasn't really about the cycle path, it's actually about the travel lane for the car. That ten feet up against the granite curb, when you've also got drains and things.
But there's one thing, if you break the cycle track, you're going to let the water into the cycle track. So that can be the way you deal with the drainage. And then the drains and the catch basins don't have to be within the travel.
So you're going to get them on the other side of that?
It's one of the options. I mean, you know, it has disadvantages. You know, certainly the sort of raised version that's in the middle picture is the nicest version, but you can't do that that way.
Okay.
Right. So, you know, this is, this is from Cambridge. This is by MIT. But what I like about this picture is you can see, these things aren't necessarily pure. They're hybrid. So this is a bicycle lane that becomes a cycle track. And I don't know, I've never been here, so I don't know what it looks like with the ground. You can sort of see, and the left side's actually clear, the cycle track rises up to the elevation of the sidewalk. So there's places where there'd be narrow, there might be places, from a street standpoint, you see we're just above the arrow on the right side, there's a catch basin there. My guess is part of the reason they did it this way is to avoid having to redo the catch basins. So you can hit the road where there's catch basins, you're not going to be dealing with the drainage and then rise up. So you get that, that opportunity for doing hybrid roads. And then this again, just sort of the standard that, I've been looking, it seems to be one of the best standards. This just came out recently. This is in meters, but just sort of seeing, does it actually fit in there? We have been doing our due diligence about funding for all this and have met with Mass DOT. And the issue you've got to know is, you know, we're talking about a couple million dollars that the city share of this just for design. And then you're talking about, you know, ten million dollars... And then you're talking about, you know, $10 million to build the whole thing. So realistically, the way, we're talking, the way this is going to build is going to be in stages anyway. And at least if some of that's going to be my priorities, my priorities would be Main Street first, King Street up to the bike path second, and north of the bike path third anyway, from a dollar standpoint. Which means that some of these issues, you know, long way from being designed, but that could be 10 years down the lines, we want to think about how does private development move forward in a way that, as the chamber said, leaves our options open, but leaves our options open both ways. You know, doesn't preclude narrow streets, doesn't preclude this area.
I guess, I mean, looking, oh, do I keep going?
Well, this is the last slide. So, so again, in terms of the issues, there's a couple ways to, one is maybe we don't need a wider right-of-way, that's what Nelson Nigard is saying, or you could still have some setback. I'm saying 16, it's not a magic number, saying, okay, north, whatever's highway business, we still want to have some setback requirement, six feet, to give the option, so if we had to do, you know, wider sidewalks and bring the bicycles there, we could do that. Again, this is the hybrid piece, let me go back one slide just to give you a sense of this. So you see in this slide how the cycle track is some distance from the road? What, so bicycle, this will say is we don't want, you don't want driveways that far from the road because you can't see the bicycles. But that's where you get the hybrid piece. It may be that in some section of King Street where the bicycle is 10 feet away from the road, separated by tree belt, but wherever you have a driveway or an intersection, you'd want to bring it down to the road level and bring it closer to the road, so the bicycles are more visible. Or maybe you have to stay at elevation, but at least they're more visible. So you have ways to deal with that sort of thing. So, you know, again, in terms of the options, it's maybe you leave a six feet of setback. And then this other issue that I hadn't realized, you had reached a consensus with the chamber raising as to how wide should the trail be to the building? And I guess Carol and I were just thinking, the landscape buffer along the trail is really important to be that the full eight feet that can support trees. The sidewalk itself, maybe a six-foot sidewalk is fine, because we like narrow sidewalks, we like less surface material.
And it might match if the zoning's going to say six feet along King Street instead of 12, where that would be the same width.
Philip is already go, kind of wider sidewalk to access a building.
I guess there's, it's drivel a little bit, because almost everything you've shown us, we've talked about before, during the process of this, going back, this is April, so we started this like back last June. You know, sidewalks, narrow ones with the bike path on King Street, a lot of, so one of, you know, mine, a lot of people's first idea was, let's not have entranceway business, let's just extend central business up through North Street. Then we said, no, let's not do that. This whole idea of the Honda lot, I mean, how many times have we talked about this? So we're almost going back to where we were a year ago, with, if we, even to talk about most of this stuff, we're kind of reopening up this whole thing. I know you got, you had this presentation from Nelson Nigard, which added more fuel to the fire, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're not reopening most things, I mean, you're right, they might be.
Predicting those, though. I mean, the ones that were the most controversial.
Yeah, I guess they see this in, there's two things. One is they see this in the process, but second is, you're still not in agreement about the second floor. And so partly it's a way to solve that problem. That to me, the argument of a second floor makes sense up to North Street, it doesn't make sense north of it. So if you guys were all agreeing you didn't need a second floor, then we probably wouldn't have been able to, there's a way to get through that issue.
Right, there were the two open issues that I thought of when we started, were the second floor and the drive-through access and the entranceway business.
Yeah.
And I know, I think Brady and I were the ones who talked mostly about the second floor, I think, I can't remember if someone else did, this was a while ago we spoke about. But we did have a lot of discussions about north of the bike path on King Street, about going down to two lanes, about bike paths. And then we had bikers saying, you know, half the bike community wanted the bike lane on the street, and the other half said, no, 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 it's too dangerous, cars go too fast. I want the bike, I want the multi-use trail because I want kids on it. So we never even got real consensus. We ended up going with the multi-use trail. Part of the other thing was, what are we going to get from Mass Highway? Because that's not our road. I'm not sure where it starts to be their road, where at King Street.
It's our road, but if we're going to rebuild it, we need their money. We could do whatever we wanted today and that's set from the road, up to, I think, the paint stores where it becomes Mass Highway right now.
Oh, okay, I thought it was started closer to stopping.
I think it's pretty close to, I think the paint stores where the sign is somewhere near there. But again, we still need their approval if we're getting their money.
Right. But so, but we're opening up a lot of issues that, before we even get into it, I'm not sure, process-wise, if we do start discussing all these things, does that mean we start comment, public outreach again? Because, you know, what people went through to get to the point we're at today, we have to reopen.
Well, we narrowed down the issues after public commenting, it's really the shred we started reaching those consensus, and you didn't go back to the public after that anyway.
Right, but we, what we as this board did, we had two issues left.
Right.
And so now we're kind of opening back up to there's more than what we had expected.
Well, maybe another way to think about it, though, is, you know, when we started down this road a year ago, longer ago in the chamber, even before that, there was that whole debate about, well, we can't do the zoning without the public infrastructure piece, they go together. And, you know, there are some people who just maybe want to talk about zoning unless they had the infrastructure done. So I think, you know, at that point, we didn't have a plan for Nelson Nigard to come. You, at some point, we need to reevaluate. So we don't really have the real numbers for, and the possibilities of what can happen within the infrastructure, within the right-of-way. So I guess I would say you were going on the best information you could have, thinking that the infrastructure, even thoughts about what the options might be within the right-of-way were a long way off, so we were going to do the best with what we could and accommodating all users sort of way off street. And I guess what we're suggesting at a staff level is, maybe we need to rethink that a little bit, given that we know more now about the right-of-way and what's been done around the country, what works, and how we might get the separation of cycle from ped, but within the right-of-way. And, you know, maybe it's not going to be that narrow or wide, maybe it's going to be narrow, maybe we have to tweak it here and there. But maybe it's enough information to go back and reevaluate what we might say in terms of the sidewalk widths and how much we want to ask of the private side for putting in the multi-use path, or is it just going to be a sidewalk?
No, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying because we've gone through this part and we were almost there, that we just have to finish that up, you know? If it's better, it's better. You know, a lot of people will be very happy to think, oh, central business to North Street, that's what they want. A lot of people will be like, oh, I wanted bike paths on King Street. So a lot of people may be very happy to open this back up, but there are also maybe people who are happy with the way we got to, and as equally you will want to open the whole thing back up. Kind of to put other people apart.
It just seems to me, in a very gentle sense, in the last nine months, the discussion has been focused from the sidewalk to the building. Now this information introduces a look from the road to the sidewalk, and it's that overlap, that sidewalk overlapped the trail, where's the bike path? That's what might be reintroduced or looked at a different way. But I think 90% of what we've discussed so far doesn't conflict with what we're talking about now. Heather?
I think what you said, Wayne, about this is going to take decades and multi-million of dollars, is probably really crucial. So the reason we're doing this is to generate a new zoning ordinance for these areas that will then put a plan in place that over the decades and as the money arrives can potentially get. So this is sort of a visionary effort.
Right, and actually, there are one, yes, let me add one thing to that as well, which is, when I'm talking about, you know, all the road getting rebuilt, that takes a long time. But there are some key opportunities along the way that can create, you know, some real things. So this one in particular, we have money for this. We have money from Walgreens and the Porton shop to design the intersection of Summer and North and King. In the grand scheme of things, this is relatively expensive, that is, a million and a half dollars. But projects at a million and a half dollars slip through, because the region as a whole gets $15 million, and you get some big projects that often little gaps them. So it could be in a project like this where suddenly you can do some narrowing, you could sort of imagine that really setting the whole stage for King Street for a relatively small project. So even though I think it's a long time before you all see it done, you could start getting really different flavor from just a few projects.
I think Nelson Nigard also talked about the big intersection of Main Street, King and Pleasant, and how it's a little crazy, right?
That's exactly right.
Or something. And when you said your priority is to start with Main Street and then gradually move out, when you said Main Street, what were you thinking?
Well, he talked, I didn't show this for the slides, but he was saying the same thing for Main Street. The Main Street is about 16,000 cars a day. So easier in terms of road dieting there. It needs capacity at the intersection, so King and Main needs capacity, and King and Main and South Street needs capacity. This is the drawing, I only showed you part of this slideshow, but this is on the right side, this is intersection of King, which is mostly what I showed in Main Street. So here, Main Street doesn't get narrower, but quickly there's a death of dropping lanes from, and so you could do some real narrowing along Main Street, basically from, you know, the Academy Music to the Beagle Shop, to drop one lane in each direction.
The overall, this sort of visioning process is, has to come before the actual, before any implementation at all, even in these little pocket areas.
Exactly.
It's the larger vision of what's going to happen.
Right, that's why we hired you, because we have, we have Fuston O'Neill doing the North Street, King Street intersection. We have about to hire Ty and Don to do the North, King Street, half the intersection. We've had before transportation parking, suggestion about some lane changes by Florence Savings Bank and Finn Street. So we have all these individual projects that keep coming forward, so we wanted to have a unifying vision, and then individual projects can work on that.
And what is, what is the planning board supposed to do next? Make a recommendation about this vision that goes into the?
And mostly at this point, your biggest voice in this process is through Devin and through me on transportation and parking commission in terms of public realm. It's more, we wanted you to, you guys aren't that involved in public realm discussions, but it's critical to know where these are for your work and all the private realm discussions. So in some ways, in Main Street, it matters less to your work because we're not changing what, any development along Main Street, you know? It makes you look very different, but it's not, then you're actually approved. But King Street becomes more important in terms of thinking about what are the standards for private realm.
But the, the thing about tonight is, you, to define the boundaries for these districts, absolutely, so we can move this across the board.
And, I mean, there are a lot of other pieces to the zoning, we talked about the 90%, you know, is set, and we're not talking about that. There are people out there in the wings waiting to do projects, and a lot of the zoning changes you've talked about would benefit them, but there's nothing that we've owed yet, we've sort of been here for a year and a half or what have you. So I think it makes sense to sort of really think about how you can wrap it up, maybe think about some of these overall vision pieces and maybe adjusting some of the private realm things, if you think it's appropriate, so that we can start to move it, keep moving along.
It seems like extending the central business definition of boundaries would be a reasonable
Yeah, I mean, that was, again, that was one of the things that came up in the discussions because we had, as the DRC, we talked about it for six months, we had a couple of forums, I know the chamber talked to a lot of people, there was, there was definitely people who thought moving that up was a good idea. You know, entranceway business was kind of created as a compromise. And a lot of people, and I think you've even said here, at least I've said, is that entranceway business, my thought was that was eventually to be incorporated into central business.
Central business, right.
So, but I do want to say this from my standpoint, part of the reason for recommending central business going up to North Street is to deal with that second floor issue, so you know, then that allows you not to require.
Yeah, I mean, it does create, you know, cleaner delineation, you know, and to have paths North Street to allow drive-through access, especially what Florence Savings Bank has one, you know, which is now, would be okay, would be important. Andrew, did you, were you stretching your arm?
No, no, I should, I should comment, yes, I'm, I was saying, no, I need to, sorry.
It seems a bit semantics whether you argue about the second floor, extending central business district, the issue is still second floor. Whether, whether you define it by zoning or whether you define it by the boundary of central business district, it's still the issue. I mean, you have it, doing it one way or doing it the other still means that that issue needs to get worked through.
I think I see the transportation pieces of it pretty clearly now. There are things that I, you know, that, that for safety reasons are my biggest drivers for liking the cycle track away from the, from the pedestrian walkway, and I think there's some really good reasons for that. I love the fact that we get more parking, I mean, there are a lot of transportation things that have come, sort of been sorted out. But just by changing the boundary of central business district, I don't think we've settled that issue, we just re-describe how we're going about doing it.
Well, you're right, except for one thing. As long as you're saying entrance business is from Trumbull to the bike path, then it represents two different areas, and so it makes sense to be in order. If you're suddenly dividing the middle on North Street, whatever it is, you know, X district and Y district, it's a different kind of conversation.
And I think a lot of people were in favor of North Street being divided, because that would, the feeling was that was more natural. You know, north, North Street does have a different feel itself.
No, my comment wasn't that. Well, I, I mean, I think the road diets and narrow lanes and stuff are great, and I'd love to see them in there tomorrow, but it's going to be a very long time before that happens. So I wouldn't necessarily want us to see embracing not requiring wide sidewalks and bike lanes and all the other good stuff, because one day in 20 years, we might be doing something with the road here. So I think in terms of any sort of zoning or proposed zoning changes, we probably should hang on to what we've got and hope that things will get better, and then we'll have even more room to do more stuff.
But from a timing standpoint, having an extra real estate in the public way, yes, takes a long time. It takes a lot longer to get it from the private way, because you only get it from private development when every single property is redeveloped.
Right, but you'll have little bits, first, you can do little things. I don't know. Seems to me that waiting for some far-off thing rather than acting now is, is not really You can always give it back.
Well, the problem is once some of those buildings are built, they're built further back from the street. So you always sort of antagonize the private property a little bit. And pushing people's buildings further back from the street, it means that the street will never be as walkable as it could have been. I guess that's the best.
You really want to have the setback fight now?
I was saying, as far as extending central business to North Street, it might make sense physically from the makeup of the road, traffic volume, and you hit that four-way intersection with Summer, and it kind of sort of feels like that's a good spot to end. But the makeup on the west side of King Street from Trumbull to North Street is entirely different than, than southerly back to Main Street. From Trumbull to North Street on the west side, that's residential, all residential, behind that, behind King Street. Whereas prior to that, there's, it doesn't exist. So extending central business north of Trumbull immediately, I think, could potentially affect the residents around it, unless you do permit parking, you know, in the Edward Square area, but I'm thinking more on the west side. And I know the chamber discussed their reservations about that issue and about the ability of the city to treat Trumbull to North just like they do Main Street as far as services, you know, trash, trash receptacles or whatever. And is it truly, are we just going to call it central business, or is it really going to be central business in that the makeup and the function and the maintenance of it is dealt with by the city? If the city's willing and able to do that, then that's one thing, but just to, just to deem it central business, not really.
But just to, just to deem it central business and not really change anything, is that gonna help anybody?
It's not gonna become central business once you start calling it that.
Cool, but, but if we zoned it that way, it comes with a lot of, yeah, central business has a lot of overs like to it.
Right.
Not to mention the central business architectural community. So those people, you know, those houses all of a sudden, they fall into the periphery of central business.
Sure. Central business includes Market Street and includes, includes State Street and includes lots of places that are already sort of not, you know, the highest volume here.
Well, and these are, I mean, I'm not, I can't picture every single structure there, but there, there's quite a mix of businesses and the Chamber people probably know better. Those first, those one-mot depths along King Street, since it is already a business district, um, a lot of those have converted from, I mean, the wood frame residential structures, but they're business use.
I just don't know what impact, and maybe it's minimal or maybe it's none or maybe, I don't see from that, from Trumbull to North introducing Nelson Nygaard, an appreciable amount of additional street-side parking to negate whatever parking we would introduce by deeming that area central business. And the fear is that all the, that needed parking is gonna somehow end up in somebody's neighborhood. Well, that's not gonna happen because we're gonna introduce additional parking on the street. I don't see us introducing that much more in that section to negate that possibility, I guess. But I don't know, I, I don't know how big of an issue that, that is in that area from Trumbull to North as far as. I think some depends on what you think would happen there. I mean, as Carolyn said, if you're redoing this new building right now, it's a free thing. So if you think someone's gonna buy up properties and assemble them with new buildings, what you're saying it could be significant. I think we, the trend we've seen for a long time is that's not what happens. Someone buys a building and bring a lawyer's office or, you know, real estate office or whatever it is. And so they're not providing any more parking anywhere for that. And I don't know that anything is gonna happen. I think we should just, at least be aware that it's a possibility and, and just acknowledge that and see it and just, just do due diligence, I guess.
Um, you have, the co-people from the public one, wait, you wanna, yeah? Stand up, introduce yourself and?
I'm, I'm, I'm Dan Fidwell. I'm, uh, on the Chamber Board and Chair of the Chamber Economic Development Committee. And so we led this process and now we realize this one, it did start about 18 months ago when the, when the ZRC gave us their blessing to go do it, develop a set of recommendations. And also I should point out, I wasn't ever the ZRC until last week when the ZRC finished its work and is in the process of sending on its plan of recommendations. I guess with regard to the, the, the central business extension, it's true that we at the Chamber initially thought, well, why not extend it? There's, there's, there's a lot of things that made sense to extending it up to, up to North Street. But we, we heard so loud and clear when we did a couple of neighborhood forums, the concern of, of, from, from, from residents about the traffic overflow from business conversions. And then, and we became convinced gradually, having thought about it over a longer period of time, that to extend central business without providing meaningful parking solutions, and I think that would be more than just the creation of a little bit of on-street parking. Everywhere else in central business, there is some sort of access to a public parking facility. And this section of, 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 of King Street would not provide that. And I think it is also true that the other things that define central business are just sort of this character of, of, of services and, and try, bid-like services as you describe them. And, and I would still have some, some, some reservations about extending it, uh, until those other elements that really make central business what they are, are, are there. But I think the, the most telling of all that is what we would continue to hear loud and clear is to resident reaction unless there was a, a much more robust, robust parking solution in that, in that, in that area. Um, and if you're, if you're gonna later return to the, to the second story question, I'd, I'd, I'd like to add another perspective on that too, but I don't know how you want to take these.
Well, you got the fork, might as well.
We, we, many of us were really charmed by the Nelson Nygaard's study and, and, and see a lot of, of, of good visioning there with regard to the, the, the public realm. But none of that changes the fact that we think there continues to be a very big difference between allowing second floor from Trumbull North versus requiring. Uh, and we heard a lot of that in, in public forums too, is that think allow as opposed to require. And if you, if you allow it and the market conditions are there on what is now the Dunkin' Donuts site or, or further up at the Honda site, absolutely. If a developer can, can, can put it together and make the numbers work for second floor office or second floor residential, by all means, we'd all love to see it. But we would hate to see any further requirements along that nature that get in the way of what could otherwise be development. And we think that's especially true on the Honda site. But I would have some concern that that could also be true in that section between, between Trumbull and North. So I would, I would, I would be hesitant whether you do it through, through, through zoning, uh, or, 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 or through a change of name. I would be reluctant to, to move from allow to require when it comes to, to, to the second story there. Because we, we did do a pretty in-depth sort of recreation of the numbers on the Honda lot. And we understood very clearly why it was just economically infeasible to build a second story there. And I don't see anything that's fundamentally changed since then with regard to the economic feasibility issues. And I'd be concerned about that if a site south of, of, of North were to become available also. I would be concerned that requiring a second floor might get in the way of something otherwise could happen.
Yeah. Can I ask some public?
I, I just want to convince, commend the planning board for taking on this difficult issue. This is, you know, these kind of changes in creation of new zones and changing the rules, it's a big deal. And the ZRC, as you may know, is gonna send you an even bigger deal in the next couple of months. But I really appreciate you being willing to take on and think about constructively ways to deal with the real problems that we have with our current King Street zone.
It's sort of, we're just wanting to have a parking thing for a second. This sort of a semantic number that a lot of traffic is all these things in terms of parking, that you want to aim for a bad 15% vacancy rate. That if your, your vacancy rate is above that, you have too much parking. If your vacancy rate's below that, you're not charging enough for parking or you don't know. You know, there's no question with a deficit of parking downtown, we probably should have another couple hundred spaces downtown. But you want another place where, where there's always parking spots, which is well above 2%, it's North of Trumbull. So I, I don't think the city would want to put more parking up until there was some demand for it. It'd be, you know, we should be putting more parking downtown, not a place that's not allowed to be.
It seems to me that the uses of, of the businesses along there would have to change before that parking story would really break, break up. You know, I just, I, I don't have trouble parking on that section of the street.
Well, I wonder too, if, I mean, if that's sort of the focus, if we're, if, um, everyone agrees that we should tackle Main Street first with, you know, going from Route 66 through the center of town, then marrying sort of City Hall and then down to Main Street and then second segment is King Street. It may take, you know, the time it takes to get the design and build out to North Street or what have you with the wider sidewalks before any real significant turnover in building use happens anyway on King Street. So, I mean, because historically, you've just seen, we've seen the reuse of those buildings, not tear downs and, and, um, combining lots and rebuilding, you know, huge massive buildings.
Just the question, I, I agree with all of that and the emphasis, I think, should be on Main Street and then creeping north. And if it takes 15 years to make that happen, that's fine. But if in the meantime, the, the bank on Jackson and Barrett Street or Barrett and King Street comes up, then we need to know, and we're trying to connect the dots over a 30-year span, then do we, do we put a granite curb there and introduce a bike path like, like in one of these illustrations or like this one? Do we, do we do that for the, the extent of the property on Main Street and let it just sit there until somebody's gonna connect to it? Like we do on the planning board as far as benches and trees and sidewalks, hoping that someday everything's all connected. Um, it's, I think it's easier with benches and trees than it is granite curb in the middle of the road. So we need to know where we're headed. Right. And that, that's the reason for doing this, Nelson Nygaard, to start discussions. And that, that's why I use this slide to think about, you could go from, you know, imagine this on King Street, that you could have a bike lane for much of King Street. And then there's some places where you'd rise up, you might get protected. So you'd have an old, you had, you could break it down.
But I don't think this was built one property at a time. This was built all at once.
Right, absolutely. But there's no question.
That it doesn't march point.
But you could, so you could have a granite curb in front of the bank.
Yeah.
For the extent of that property. And at the end of that property, you just go down into a painted lane.
That's right.
Yeah. There were places, you know, Drive Through University Drive, I was looking there yesterday. I was sort of curious about it. University Drive has a couple of these things. I'm not sure if it's designed by a cycle track or not, but close to the northern part of University Drive, there's a separate curb island that's literally 100 feet long, 50 feet long. And then it just goes into bike, into children. I'm not sure if with wide, but you can do relatively short things, the sort of orphans that you're talking about.
Right.
That you can make them work as long as you figure what you're doing. I mean, that's sort of what we talked about with Nelson Nygaard about South Street, is can you do that sort of cycle tracks, just the intersection, New South, South and Old South, and the rest of it go back to, you know, some of the.
Well, I, the request that we consider the four lanes instead of the three lanes because we are at the sort of breakpoint for traffic, you know, I've seen 20,000, I've seen 22,000. And I, I would want us to really understand that. I mean, we, we pay for a consultant to give us an answer and that's what they said is that it'll work here.
Yeah.
But, um, I would be uncomfortable in this seat if traffic on King Street started backing up after we put in, you know, a road diet. So I'm, I'm curious and, and I'll just say, I'll take it on as a, as a project to try to see some traffic numbers from, you know, we do know the traffic column is going on with road diets in towns, in communities all across the country. It, you know, it, it, it takes a lot of money to do, so it's not like it's popping up everywhere. But it'd be curious to see what some of those traffic counts that are up at that maximum level are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I mean, are, are you looking tonight? I can't imagine you're looking for a vote tonight.
No, I think we're looking for some direction.
That's what I, I would imagine. You guys want some guidance from us as to where, how we're gonna proceed on this. Maybe, uh, maybe now we can go back and look at it piece by, you know, take, do a quick run through. I think the first change is currently what we've, we've discussed so far is entranceway business starts at Trumbull and goes to the bike path. And the, the, the first thing I think you guys are talking about is saying, let's not do that. The big change is extend central business to North. Entranceway business, then we go from North to the bike path.
I think what we're suggesting is a way to get through the discussion about two-story. And it is going back to the zoning, but maybe it's a way to say, if, I mean, if, if the board really was, you know, that was one of the issues that was unresolved. So potentially if you thought about it, instead of a breakpoint at Trumbull and said maybe a breakpoint in a different place, maybe that would change your perspective about where you might feel two-story was appropriate. Because I know, I thought I heard that there were different characters in those, within that one, um, span and that because the, the portion from Trumbull to North was already two-story, why would you then go back to a 20-foot height if you already had two-story buildings there? So I think that was my interpretation, way I heard over the course of the last several months. So the idea isn't really, it's a way to get, maybe rethink it. And so we just put that on the table as an option.
So on the other hand, so if we just say we're okay with removing the singles, the second story requirement with entranceway business and allowing drive-through, we could be done?
Well, you, you notice that the, that the red line version, you potentially could be done. But the red line version isn't about just allow any drive-through. It's really under certain circumstances, here where drive, here's where drive-throughs may be appropriate. I think we talked about it, I thought we talked about it once after that initial meeting was that, you know, if it's in the rear and it doesn't necessitate a second curb cut, then maybe it's appropriate and okay to have an office drive-through. I don't know that, I didn't think I heard, um, everyone waving hands that they want a drive-through restaurant because that we really need that from south of the rail trail to Main Street.
That was, that wasn't.
I think it was really more about office is what I thought of it.
Well, I guess that's, um, if you guys are looking for direction from us, and so I would say, do we want to explore these options that Wayne Carolyn proposing based on the, the feedback we got, or the city got from Nelson Nygaard? Or as a way, I have to say, let's just fast-track this thing, just to be done with it, um, resolve the second story and the drive-through access. But, but you guys brought up a lot of things that are, are new. I mean, the, the whole traffic colony, the extending of the parking, the, the ideas from Nelson Nygaard are, are, I think, worth discussing. So, um, maybe we have to, I don't know, open it up a little bit more to, to, to just walk our way from Main Street and King Street down and see what we want. I don't know. What, what do people think, what would they like to do?
I, I still get the impression that the thrust of Nelson Nygaard's presentation was a traffic-oriented discussion, which was not our discussion over the last 18 months. And talking about central business or entranceway business or 20-foot or two stories. So for me, they're, they're two different issues that have come together at certain points as far as sidewalks and trails and things like that. So I'm, I'm confused on, are we, are we trying to bundle this all together and put it all together and go for it as one? Or we, can we say, give us a minute to think about the, the traffic information and we'll, right now, we're gonna focus on the central business and the, and the drive-through? I, I guess I need direction on what we're trying. I think you're right. They're, they're mostly two different tracks and two different issues. There's just a few areas that overlap.
Right.
And so one of the areas of overlap is one of the reasons entrance business was gonna have a small setback was to give us more land if eventually we become part of the public right-of-way. And I guess I'm saying, I'm not sure we need that land anymore. So that's, that's really the main overlap in terms of the entrance business.
And for the highway business, it's the 12-foot, because we're, the current idea is a 12-foot multi-use trail versus what you now are saying, well, if we did six, then we might be able to.
Right. But it is true that north, in a highway business area, it is the area where you can see these letters, right? It's the area where you need to be more cautious about, I mean, I hope Nelson Nygaard's stuff works and view road dieting, but it's the area to be more cautious about. South of the bike path is pretty slammed up to Nelson Nygaard.
Terrence?
Yeah, my recollection of the discussion in the, um.
Sorry, you, I.
Yeah, sorry. My recollection of the discussion about the, having the eight-foot buffer and setback in the entrance business way zone was in part because right now, there is a difference between south of Trumbull and north of Trumbull where actually the buildings are setback and some of them do have, it's lawn, but, you know, a, a green space in front of the buildings. And was to create some consistency and, and to continue that character that's already there rather than to, um, make additional space for roadway expansions. Um, I think that was the Chamber's discussion and that was our recommendation at the beginning.
I think coming out of Charette though, the, the compromise was five, you have the five-feet, um, five-foot sidewalk, then you have another five-foot strip, buffer strip that ultimately the goal would be to make a two-tiered side sidewalk. And so part of that would be on the private property. So if now, if we can, if we see now that the right-of-way is wide enough to have a substantial sidewalk in the right-of-way, we don't need to take the private property side of that for a sidewalk.
Agreed. I think though, that what the Chamber was saying and what, uh, is a part of that economic development group is that, um, if you can accommodate all of the public improvements and within the existing right-of-way, then that actually is, from our perspective, a preferred route rather than requiring the developer to take on the expense of building out public improvements on what's already private land and, and then turning that over into public land and property. And then still, since we can do what we need to do on the public side within the existing right-of-way, continue to have that consistency with the existing setback that's there within the entranceway business because it actually is a separate, um, identity from the central business now. And, um, not everybody wants to see that extended, central business extended and have that absorbed into a central business identity.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting, that's, looking at the map, we're talking about two blocks on all of King Street.
Yeah.
That's where, you know, we're, the things we spent the most time discussing on this are the width of sidewalk and that buffer.
And it's completely built out. It's hard to imagine massive changes in, to those two blocks. There's no, there's, everything's there.
Right, and the interesting thing that I think Carolyn, you just said is, if, you know, call it the hybrid, it's what we have plus some of Nelson Nygaard. You're saying what makes it better is we're not asking people, we're not trying to take or ask people to do things on their land. Everything becomes work we do in the private. So if you have, by doing the road dieting, everything's in the public right-of-way, so it's simpler. Does that, not only for up to north, but does that work all the way, it does work all the way up to, up north, to North King Street, you're saying? Now, you're shaking your head down.
It doesn't. What Terry was just worried about doesn't, doesn't, I don't see my way through from the extension of King Street, where we're talking about the four lanes. I mean, that's where we're going to have to make a plan on what to do with the bicycle track and what to do with a, with either a combined-use trail or sidewalks and a cycle track. I mean, that's the planning that we do so that we can begin to leverage the developer to do that. I mean, I think that's, you're hoping that doesn't happen, but that's the only way I see that it would happen. Am I wrong?
Actually, I see, I see it differently. I mean, one of the opportunities is Mass Highway needs to repave and reconstruct King Street within the next few years. And if we came up with a plan and prioritize that and leverage that funding, it's possible that we could do a greater extent and not have to segment it.
Well, by that, though, if you know that Mass Highway is going to redo King Street, then I think it makes a lot of sense to, to look at what Nelson Nygaard is proposing for, for King Street, which affects what we were thinking about doing for our zoning now, which means that multi-use trail, we pretty much would abandon it to a six-foot wide sidewalk. We would still require the buffer on the property side and the tree belt on the roadside, but we're talking about from 12 to six foot, if that's the width of the sidewalk. In preparation for when Mass Highway does that, we get our five or six-foot wide bike lanes. So it's an interesting, you know, I'm not sure, Terry, if you can guarantee that Mass Highway is going to come forward.
Well, I know that they, they're actually pushing the city in terms of wanting to reconstruct and, and wanting to get it in their schedule. And we said, well, if that's the case, and, and this is where the city's going, can we try to combine our efforts and, and leverage our funding? I, I don't know how realistic that is, because we're going to need, you know, there's a big cost differential between repainting what's there and, you know, this whole reconstruction of, of road dieting, so. But I think it's worth investigating, and I wouldn't totally dismiss it, because we have had preliminary conversations with them, and they are very open to the idea of trying to work with us to combine the efforts.
So Wayne?
I was just thinking, you know, classic mill overlay is $20,000 design to do the entire thing, and those $20,000 on it, so.
Who pays for the design?
Typically, local government pays for, certainly in the non-highway layout, the non-Mass Highway layout, local government pays for design, and then federal state fund to pay for the construction. In the highway layout, Mass Highway can pay for design, but they may, it may or may not be their priority.
So North King Street doesn't qualify as highway?
Right, right.
Even though it's four-lane, that's not, that's not the definition?
It's where you see that sign out there.
Oh, that's it. You know, so part of me thinks that, do we plan, just, do we plan for what we really, really want? And do we zone right now to what we really, really want, or do we zone for what we think we can get?
Well, I don't know, back to Jen's comment, I think it's important, you can make this argument either way. For this two-block area that is mostly built up, you're not going to get a lot of changes anyway. So you can make the argument, certainly I'd make the argument, that's why you should do central business, because you're not really stopping development. On their hand, if you do it entrance business, I'm not going to lose all my sleep, because not much is going to happen anyway.
I would argue the other way, because if you make it central business, anything new that comes in there, they're mandated. Whereas if you leave it entrance business, then they have the option to do it and make it look like downtown, but they're not required to do it. And I think that, again, that's a huge cost differential. And if someone's required to do it, I think we could lose the potential redevelopment.
Well, and I, I totally buy our, well, that's the reason I totally buy your argument north of North Street, because I think you run the risk of having all those lots remain vacant or underutilized for years. So that's why I totally buy north of that. South of it, I don't want to create an incentive for someone to tear down a perfectly good multi-story wood-framed building. So that's sort of why I draw a different line. I agree with Terry that Honda's just not going to get redeveloped, and those buildings, you know, from the pawn shop up to Honda aren't going to get redeveloped.
Well, also, when you look at north of Trumbull, we have, on one side, this church I've heard so much about, which takes up about half of the space up to North Street, then Edward Square. And, you know, including the armory of those buildings.
And you had.
And a church.
And you'd always, you'd already thought you were going to rezone the church anyway, I thought, because that sort of issue was already in the central business, is that my understanding?
That was on the table, because it would make sense to keep it split zone.
Right, to make the whole property.
Right, to make, that would be a lot, but so.
Pretty much that whole side of the street is already a done deal, worked.
Right, and it's just the, the west side, which is built up with pretty much wood-framed, framed, multi-story buildings now.
And, you know, obviously, we have on downtown, on Sonic and Center, with lots of wood-framed buildings. So it's not like going central business, suddenly people are redoing the buildings. So wood-framed buildings can accommodate commercial things for years.
But does this have to be conditioned? Since, since we can't, zoning can't govern parking spots on the street. We can't zone to say, the city has to go and strip these streets or has to be revitalized. So if we have this consideration that, well, we could consider going all the way to, to North Street as central business with the condition that we do on-street parking, we can't force the city to do it. So what is the chance that this, what does the city have to do in order to stripe those, as you showed them, to do on-street parking all the way up to Summer?
Um, I, I think it's.
Or on the other side of the, of North?
Yeah, it's a consensus discussion, I mean, you know, striping in the grand scheme of things is the one thing that's not that expensive. So the striping is not a cost issue, it's more just all the, you know, Transportation Park in particular leading, the breach, essentially, that's the main way to do it.
Does the city council have to vote on it? Who, who?
If the council has to vote on it, Transportation Park, when it's due, I would go to city council.
Okay, which would include, you know, bringing meters or however you decide to, to control the parking?
Because you've got build-outs on the intersections and you've got things that are.
Right, well, certainly the, the King Summer North, that's a big ticket item that takes a while. But, you know, most of the parking is south of that, so.
Now, what about the, and again, we can't zone this, but I'm not even sure if we condition it, but the idea that some of the residents, especially if Edward Square becomes a public right-of-way, or Bright, Summer and Trumbull making those permanent parking.
Well, it could be if you saw the same times it happened. But we, we started that at the council before and say, we recommend, you know, you do have a central business all the time. You suggest expansion of central business and expansion of central business architecture. And council technically could pass one, but you just like three, three passes.
Well, the other thing is Edward Square is coming forward now. There could be, you all have to make a recommendation to city council that Edward Square be becoming a public street. Because it's tech, yes, not, because they've petitioned the city council to make it public. Apparently, some issues came up this winter with, with that. But, so when that comes before you, you could also assign, you know, a recommendation or your comments back to city council, could be, we highly recommend that resident-only parking be incorporated after this becomes a public street, because you can't do it on a private street.
And I have any meetings with the other neighborhoods, but when we were doing the off-ramp at Edward Square, if you liked that, we did have a neighborhood meeting, and we did have a brief discussion about residents-only parking. So that street, at least, I know there's lots of support for. Good guess it would be for the streets, but I've never had that conversation.
Can I just ask a quick question? Do we have residence-only parking anywhere else?
I'm Kensington, it's the only street in the city.
Okay. That alone, resident.
Do you have breaks, like, you know?
I, because I don't know about breaks, I'm not sure. We talked about.
It's, there's no sign of that.
Jen?
I mean, this is just sort of anecdotal and based on my experience living on North and walking down Market all the time, but I sense that the parking issues, and I don't doubt that there's parking issues for the residents on the streets like the chamber talked about, but I'm not necessarily convinced it has to do with the businesses on that stretch there. I think it's people who work in the city and park there all day, because there's the closest nine-meter parking spots to downtown. So I'm not sure that, I don't, I'm not sure the zoning change would have any impact on that parking issue. I, I'm not doubting it's an issue, but I don't think a change in zoning is going to make a federal or worse or change it. And I don't know that for sure, but what I do notice is that cars tend to come, you know, at nine and leave at five. So, you know, they're there all day on that southern part of where, where Market starts to become north.
And so you see the same thing off Holly Street, the side streets off Holly, you know.
Right, because it's the closest neighborhood parking, which means nine-meter parking to downtown.
State Street, Fruit Street. Right.
Right.
Well, so.
I think they all get hit in that one.
If Wayne and Carolyn are looking for guidance, because, a couple of things have come up. I think what would make it clear to me is, we have very concrete, we actually have something, we have the table in front of us for what we are very close to say we're done. But I'm unclear as to what your, your, your changes would do. For example, if we decided, starting at Main Street again, so if we decided to extend central business to North, what changes from what we've already seen would we be looking at? If we decided then to go entranceway business to the bike path, I think it's pretty much entranceway business the way we've already decided it, with the exception that we would give, we would say entranceway business, no second floor, still 20 feet. You've got to build it 20 feet. And we would have drive-through with the conditions. But Nelson Nygaard, are we going to change, because of that study, are we changing the width of the sidewalk, the buffer, and what we're going to be asking people to do either on their private land or what the city's going to be doing on the public side? And then from the bike path north, if we decide that we're going to uphold our hopes out, that we're going to get a good design for North King Street, and we want to incorporate the ideas that we've seen, what if this would change? Are we going to get rid of the 12-foot bike path, if we're going to have a 10-foot tree belt, a six-foot path, a 20-foot buffer? I guess we're going to need some clarity as to exactly what you guys are saying. But I guess the, I think what probably would help them most is, do people feel that this is moving in the right direction? Are people so opposed to, to even looking at this that they want to stick with what we have? Or do people really think that we could even do better than what we have?
I think we could do both. I think we go forward with the zoning and with that, and then it's win-win.
Yeah, but to, to implement zoning twice in the same two-mile stretch in a six-month period is going to make people's head explode. Like, let's just do it once.
No, not implementing zoning, I mean, we can change the zoning around, but in terms of we keep the sidewalk requirements and we don't mess with any of that.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We can do whatever, I mean, it might make sense to go up to North Street, I'm, I'm open to that. But I don't want to sort of start losing multi-use pathways on the off-chance that one being Mass Highway might decide to.
No, I think we're headed in the right direction, and it seems like we're almost there. And now we have this new information that's got us, not off track, but it's, it's made us rethink some of the issues that we had before. And so I think I just need clarity on, on, we were going to, we only thought we had two or three things to resolve. Now, those two or three things are going to reintroduce two things that we had previously resolved. And so what are the effects of, it, it sounds like with Nelson Nygaard, in any instance in their study, would the public right-of-way not be able to address the traffic calming needs? In any, in any instance, would it be required to use private development?
I think the area north of the rail trail is the biggest unknown. The area south, no, they wouldn't be private land. The area north, I think the jury's still out a little bit.
Brent?
I, I'd like to go back and reexamine why we're doing this at all in this precision, two-block stretch, but I don't want to do it today.
Why, why, why we want to move from Trumbull to North, you mean, or why?
Yeah, why, why are we talking about this at all, sort of theoretically precise?
Well, because I think you and I were the ones who were the strongest proponents for requiring second-story entranceway business. So this is a way to get second-story requirements up to North, but not all the way to bike path. So that's, that's why I think the proposal came out.
No, going back before that, because I think one of the propositions was to expand central business, but, but not that much, and so, you know.
Right.
I just wanted to examine the status quo and see what, what are the real problems with it.
Well, so what would you ask Wayne and Carolyn to do then?
I don't know, I'd like to go back.
For you to go back and.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Kevin?
I, I think Mark came up right a minute ago, when he said we, we had, you know, all of these tables that we were fixing, and then we have a consultant come in with basically a traffic plan. It's not a, it's not a planning document beyond that, it's a traffic more or less. So I think, and you did, tonight, it wasn't quite as clear, what implementing the best of their ideas would mean to the tables is what I would like to see.
No, I agree, and, yeah, I mean, almost side, not even quite side by side, but, you know, it would be, you know, because honestly, we've looked at these tables to the level of detail at least twice, and this is definitely a lot.
I, I think.
I was just looking at you.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I think that's a really good point. I, I mean, I don't want to lose the momentum that Nelson Nygaard brought us, but I think we also need to, you know, compare with what we've done. And I'm also in favor of the simplification that extending the central business district would bring us in terms of the second story. I, I support that.
Kevin?
I guess I'm now thinking that the whole, this whole central business discussion that's eaten up the most of every time is kind of a red herring, because I agree with what Devin said seven hours ago, that it's really about the issue of the second floor for me, that the, the big issue, and I think it's pretty obvious, is the development of the Honda site. And do, I've always been a proponent of the second floor, and I've always felt really strongly about that, but I have to balance that against what I'm hearing from, from Wayne and from the chamber and from Terry about the feasibility of having development there. So for me, the change from, you know, the change in the zoning for those two blocks, to protect, you know, to sort of take that piece out, doesn't do it for me at all, because I think that it does, it has so little impact on the, the second floor shows so little impact on that short stretch from Trumbull to North, that's not the issue for me. The issue really is the Honda site. So if that's why we're revisiting this, for me, it doesn't, it doesn't resonate.
It doesn't resonate, but, but the proposal would be entranceway business, starting at North Street to the bike path, then Honda site would be in that district and would not require the second story. So are you saying that's a good thing or is it a bad thing?
Well, I'm saying if we're trying to do, if we're trying to change the zoning from Trumbull to North to get, to try to get around this issue of the second floor, that doesn't really, that doesn't address the real issue for me.
Do you still like to see second-floor requirements on North?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's the big issue for me. I'm balanced, I, I think generally it's a really important concept, and I've always supported it, but I'm bound, I'm struggling with balancing that against the realities of, of the, you know, the economic development reality.
Brent?
Why do they, why do they condone the place, the former blighted workplace can't be developed? It's open to conjecture. It's not necessarily, and just because Dennis says that the second floor is a deal-breaker, might, it might be just because the real estate is overpriced, the rent is outrageous, it's hazardous, like, who knows?
That's what keeps me up at night.
I mean, they're looking for a simple answer, you know, something that seems very suspicious of it.
Well, I see, I could always put it there.
Well, it seems to me that the, so, on a larger lot, that is a, that is a much more relevant issue than it is if you had, you know, one of the lawyer's offices, it's across from the co-op, that, you know, those, if you have a lot size that size downtown, you're going to have a second floor, I think. I mean, I, I would rent it, that's what I would do, you know, so. I'm, in that area, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Can you imagine something like Acme Autobody going in for?
Well, actually, you know what I want to do, though? Because I, I don't want to try to vote on it tonight. I don't want to, I don't want to hash over all the issues that we require to vote, but I want to give Carolyn and Wayne direction as to what we're going to need if we want it to be.
Devin's suggestion is great.
So I, is there anything else that people want to ask Carolyn and Wayne?
This isn't a question, but in, in my head, my. This isn't a question, but in, in my head, my whole wrestling, that was just issues, just with what affects what, is, is north of North Street. I'm, I'm not hung up on anything from, from Trumbull to north, and I haven't heard anybody tonight say, "I'm against extending central business to North Street."
Well, then Terry tested.
Oh, right, right. Doesn't complete. Anybody on the planning board say, "I'm against that." And so I don't know, is, is there on our to-do list? Can we shorten our to-do list tonight? Is there, do we have consensus on any of the, you know, it seemed like coming into town.
I think what I'd like to see is, what would, what, if we, even if we move central business to north, I wanna see what entranceway business changes occur because of Nelson Nygaard. And if we decide that entranceway business still starts at Trumbull, then we still need to know what entranceway business changes would happen from Trumbull north or north-north. So it's, I mean, I'm with you, I think, I have no trouble with central business going to North Street.
To me, just because in that two-block period, the Nelson Nygaard study showed that whatever we're gonna do, we can do it within the road. So to me, then, we're just talking about, you know, whether it stays entranceway or central business, I'm not, I can go either way, I'm not really hung up. And to me, those questions aren't as clear when you go north of North Street, because then the Nelson Nygaard study says, "Well, you might be able to do it here, but you might not be able to do it here," it's not as clear. And that's where I think I need help.
You guys, is this all making sense?
Is enough guidance?
I have one, I think we have enough information. I have one follow-up question.
About King Street?
Sort of.
But you're smiling, so we're not gonna flake.
Well, no, it has more, it, an issue of timing, and so, and it is timing about sort of the pieces of these things and how they go forward. So central business, I think the use, there are a bunch of use changes that you, that there are no more issues about, and to me, it sounds like the biggest issue is the MAC change, what, relative to central business, is it gonna stay the same size or is it gonna be expanded? But I wondered how you might feel if we came forward chopping off central business as the table of use thing and the reorganized table, if we brought that forward separately and sooner, meaning very soon, so that projects, the benefits of those changes that you all talked about could go further, so setbacks and uses and things like that. And then the MAC issue about whether it gets expanded or not, it's gonna be a separate zoning act anyway, so that could remain in the package of the rest of King Street.
I don't have a problem, I don't think we had any controversy with central business.
But you're, you're defining central business, are you saying up to North Street?
Right, the way it exists now and the current boundary, since that's still an issue. If we brought that as sort of a separate item, just the table changes and started moving that forward through the city council.
These were the table changes that we talked about, or something, height extended.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, then you're talking about the next meeting.
Yeah, or may, or maybe I'll just go ahead and send it to the city council.
Yeah, to be honest, I'd sign off.
I, I would be the first to vote, because we kept lumping it in with entranceway business, we kept putting me out, we kept having the same discussions, all considered, same discussions all at the same time, so.
Okay.
I don't think we have a vote or not.
I don't have any objection to Carol's proposal. I did have a couple of comments on the uses though.
Sorry, Terry, you can't hear me.
Sorry. I don't have any objection to that concept. I do have a couple of comments on the uses though, and it does, it does affect the central business table. So I don't know if you wanna hear that tonight, if it's getting too late, or.
We don't have, I don't have, no limit, I don't have it.
That's what you told me.
She just asked, she sent a special email to you today just to address your.
No, she sent me the King Street, but not central business.
Well, you know, the other thing is.
Oh, it's in the Mrs.?
I'm like the.
Oh, I got it.
Just central business or all of them?
I have central.
I mean, they're, they're all pretty much consistent, so.
Well, you can just do central business.
Central business tonight, all right. Let's see, rail or taxi passenger terminal?
Sorry, you haven't addressed it.
You, you changed it, okay, all right. Under the educational religious exemption category, there's a, there's a parentheses, residence of a caretaker above first floor only. Carolyn says she thought that it applied only to museums and nonprofits, but the way I read it, it applies to all of them, and usually churches, I mean, you may not get a new church, but usually churches.
I modified that just to clarify.
You changed it, okay.
That's the way it is in the current zoning, so I just clarified that.
Okay, great. I don't know if we really want a veteran, a veterinary hospital downtown, that's not the big one for me, but I, I'm not sure that's the, the best location for it, I don't think it's allowed now. The bigger one for me is the private utility substation or similar facility or building. Right now, we have two different categories, one is a power plant and one is this category as listed. This category requires a special permit in most districts, the power plant is not allowed at all, except in certain, I think maybe one zone. And power plant sort of has disappeared, I'm not sure it's been integrated in here. The way I read it, I would include a power plant in here, which means that a power plant could go anywhere in any of these zones, or in central business without a special permit. I'm not sure that, again, it may not ever happen, but I don't know that that's what we want to happen.
We had a long discussion about this, but power plant, by removing it means it's not allowed, so you're, you're reading private utility as power plant?
It's not defined, I read private utility as including a power plant, yes, or I could read it that way.
If I put solar panels all across the top of my building and sell it back to the grid, am I a power plant?
No, I wouldn't consider that, no.
I thought that whole line item we discussed, but.
No, we, we talked about, we wanted to allow a substation because the need, I think there's.
By right or by special permit?
The substations are different, I think, I mean, that's, I mean, they're kinda ugly, but it's not a power plant, it's not a generator.
Well, I don't think, I think that was our intention to allow power plants, I think the, the, most of the discussion we had with Mark, I think, was about such, was about substations.
What I thought even though is we thought by special permit it'd be okay, but not allowed.
I think it was the other way around.
By site plan.
Site plan, because it's.
Screen units, really.
We're, we're saying the use of a substation is okay, we just wanna be able to dictate.
Okay.
Because if they get special permit, we're saying the use is not allowed.
Well, that's what I thought, that's what I thought we were talking about, maybe one power station, maybe one, I remember talking about it, I thought that's okay.
So then, so, well, I think with, with, what, is, is there a definition of private utility facility?
No, I just looked it up and it's not in there, under our current zoning.
So, I mean, I think the, Terry and I had this conversation last week or so, and, you know, I think maybe some of it is semantics or interpretation. I don't, we may be far from here, but there are cities that are doing mini-power stations as sort of new technology comes forward for sustainable energy production, like recapturing discharge or, or fuel for heat from sewage treatment plants and turning that back into electricity, and so there are many sort of power stations that are generating this electricity in downtown situations in different places. So there are, so I would hate to say that, you know, necessarily that, you know, there's a reason why you wouldn't include that, because most of those are, need to be sited in a place that's close to the demand, as opposed to having it, you know, far away and with transmission lines and that kind of thing, so.
You could do this separate use, you could do district heating and district power separate.
So defined that way.
District power, but still there'll be a power plant, you mean, I mean, I think you would need to define, I think you'd have to work on the definition a little bit more. And if you're really trying to encourage those kind of renewable generation, then, you know, define it that way, specifically call it out.
Well, I think, I think district power would be the way that I think makes sense, because then you're not talking about, I think Terry's example was a Mount Tom coal-fired plant or some other, you know, cogeneration plant in downtown, so I think that would be different.
District, but district heating is, it's, it's more that it's just one power facility that serves a larger area, as opposed to having individual units, that doesn't say anything about how it's powered, and it doesn't necessarily have to be alternative energy, it could be a wood, it could, well, it could be wood, could be coal, could be gas, oil, so, again, I think it's a, a finer distinction in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we just put special permit requirement, couldn't we then just take a look at it when it comes along and say yes or no?
But you'd wanna define why it wouldn't be appropriate, I think, instead of having it just a blanket special permit, because then someone's gonna wanna know, "Well, how can I get a permit? What do I?"
Well, and I want to be clear about that people can expect whether to, to approach us with a, I mean, I don't want there to be that kind of uncertainty, I want them to think about what we're intending to do with it.
Yeah, I think there's a tendency to try and make more things allowed more, right, partly to make things easier, and I, this is an instance where it'd be ideal to require a, it looks like a special permit, seems to me.
But the, so the question, so, actually now, I think I'll, Corey, you guys have said it at one point, if we, Mark thought it was a special permit to begin with, if it didn't become a special permit, Carolyn, you're saying we'd have to make it clear as to what the criteria for that special permit are?
I think that makes sense, yes.
Do you say that required?
Because you're, I mean, you're having this conversation about, you know, trying to figure out what's good and what's bad, but you're, if you don't have that out there so people understand, so an applicant comes forward and says, "Well, am I a power plant? Am I just, you know, is district heating okay, and under what circumstances is it not okay?" They need to know whether it even makes sense to put forward the engineering costs to, to move on a permit.
Well, then, is it, does it make sense to leave as a site plan, but very explicitly define what we mean by private utility? Is that a, because, I don't, I think when we say private utility, that does not to me imply Mount Tom.
I don't know what it does if I not even, let alone what it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so maybe the issue is not, what we're saying is allowed, but the issue is, let's define very clearly what we mean by private utility.
I have a question, Carolyn, do, do other things that currently require site plan approval spell out what the requirements are?
Well, in these changes, you've done, you've talked about doing a lot of that, so this, there's a shift, and I think currently in the zoning, there are several, many special permits that say, "Here's what you need as part of your special permit," but not every special permit, and so, and a majority of the special permits don't say why it's necessary to get a special permit, under what special circumstances would a permit be granted? So I think that guidance in the zoning needs to be there to, so that it's open and people understand exactly what the city's gonna be looking for in a special permit application.
Wouldn't that have to be there anyway, but, I mean, I would like to see that for site plan too, so if that's going to be there, we can put it there and then still make it a special permit.
But it is for site plan, that's what zoning is.
Yeah, sorry, I think we're, you're talking to the, so.
Well, special permit, you wanna, there, means that there are circumstances where things are not appropriate, so you, what a site plan is, you wanna make sure that the site is, is designed in a way not to have impacts or it takes care of surrounding uses in that way, but the, generally, the concept of the use is just fine, it's just you wanna make sure the details of how it's used are addressed.
Well, not knowing what a private utility is, because we haven't defined it yet, I can't imagine under what description that it would, that we'd wanna promote it in central business. So to me, I, I thought it was by special permit only. It just seems like, it seems, doesn't seem like, I don't, again, know what it is, but whatever it is, doesn't seem like it belongs to central business.
The other thing would be, it would be interesting to see what a power plant looked like when we slapped design guidelines on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know what a private utility is, but I know one when I see one.
All right, so let's, yeah, let's resolve this then, because there's, I think there's two ways we can resolve it, one is, or there's probably three, we could, we could completely remove private utility and just say substation, because a substation, we did have a lot of discussion about, in my recollection, the substations are things we wanted to allow by site plan. We explicitly define what private utility is and leave it a site plan, or we leave it kind of general and we make it a special permit and try to figure out a way to describe what that would look like.
Do we know, even though we haven't defined what it is, is a private utility allowed anywhere else?
Well, you just, yes, the general industrial and office industrial, you just approved, I mean, those are the first sort of changes, to allow that by site plan instead of special permit.
Does that make sense to you?
Right now, it's a special permit in a lot of places, but there was this whole discussion about that.
And along those lines as to whether or not it belongs to central business, Terry mentioned that the veterinary hospital you didn't think was allowed now, we didn't introduce that to central business, because that seems like another weird fit to me.
Well, there was a spe, right, I think as you were going through that table many, many, many months ago, you know, the vet, the hospital came up as one of the special permits in certain locations, and so it's really more along the lines, if someone wants to put it in central business, you know, a small hospital, whatever, you know, whatever it could be, it's kind of like a medical use, I guess, in that sense, and I think that's how, that's the context of it.
But this, this, that the vet hospital doesn't need site plan or special permit? It seems like a not, again, a not fit. You know, we had Doggy Daycare in State Street for several years.
Well, that's.
But just in terms of the impact, please.
I don't, I don't feel stronger about it.
I feel stronger about the private utility, even though I don't know what it is.
So, so, so we can.
No, that's it, that's it for central business.
Right, that's why I resolved, so how we're gonna resolve this, because if it can't resolve, we can't hold on.
I think the special permit approach, I mean, this is not so, I'm not advocate for special permits generally, this is not so rarely, and it could be so many different things, I think candidates approach the good ones.
All right, so if we move this to special permit, then we get to define what a private utility is, even if we can't.
We have something we can go against, we're not giving a reason.
That's a special permit. There you go. All right, so if we're making, we're gonna make that a special permit, we're gonna leave it veterinary hospital, there were two other kind of wordsmithy changes that Carolyn and Terry did, are there anything else in this so we can move it on? Anybody wanna make the recommendation?
Tell you what.
You're fired.
I might have moved that central business district zoning table as rewritten and marked that night, we passed along to the city council.
Sorry? Carolyn, sorry. Captain, sorry. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Was, is that your last other business thing? Because I have two things I just wanna talk about quickly.
Well, no, there was still one other thing on the revised agenda, but yeah, I mean, no, that was on.
All right, that was, sorry, that was CVC in the year, so.
Do you wanna, do you wanna know about the CDC topics?
Uh, yeah.
Because we have a, a meeting next Wednesday, May 4th, uh, 7th, where we will be making decisions and recommendations that we will pass on to the mayor of the city council on six applicants who we have assessed, we've had open meetings, we've had all sorts of discussion about them. Do you wanna know what those six are?
Sure.
Okay. One is a, a engineering design for the Hotel Bridge in Leeds, which is application for $35,000 to do a, a design plan. Florence Fields is a hundred, around $126,000, is that, do you remember the name?
Very bold, I better remember.
Very bold, it's Vinalar.
Florence Field is part of Vinalar, and it's the recreation fields, a continuing, a beginning implementing, actually building of fields.
Implementing or designing?
What?
Implement or design?
I believe.
We already have money for design, so acquisition of design.
They have money for design, so this is actually beginning to.
So you're gonna start construction?
Yeah.
So, so, we own the land, design we have money for, we have money for the multi-use path along the road, so the construction this summer, we're using multi-use path.
I think I've seen designs, uh, we just had pictures.
So we have a master plan we did last year, and this year we hired Berkshire Design to do full 100% plans.
And then, yeah, and then there will be one, one field that will be.
I think it's gonna be just the multi-use field, that's the money for, or multi-use trail, that's the money for, this year.
Community Gardens has, Grow Food North Hampton has asked for $104,000 for the beginning development of the, how many acres, is it about 40 acres?
So seventeen acres.
Seventeen acres, 400 community garden plots that will be over a rapid four-year period, I think, ultimately constructed.
Is it gonna be Vinalar?
Yes, all made Vinalar, and then there are three other applicants, I, I didn't know I was supposed to do this, so I'm just kind of out of memory, but the Conservation Fund has asked for $100,000 to kind of replenish its, its coffers. Connecticut Greenway is $200,000. Connecticut Greenway is $200,000 application for design. It will take the bike trail from Neurologic Bridge up to the Hatfield Line. And then the $100,000 would be for the Pocket Park at City Hall, out into Main Street.
For the design?
And some implementation.
Design probably goes as far as curbs, enough to sort of show where it is, the grass behind it, and longerest term would be design.
Putting up a couple benches, maybe.
Exactly.
That would be the start of the road diet for Main Street.
Are all these expected to pass? You guys, will you guys vote on all these?
It comes to, we have, for the, it looks like the estimate for the whole year of 2011 is we'll probably have about $1.4 million. So, we certainly wouldn't want to make grants for anything exceeding half of that. And these come to a little over $600,000. But we're going to be discussing on next Wednesday whether we'll be making full grants or partial grants, or not at all. I mean, we've done sort of a straw poll, but we really don't know where we're gonna come out on it until we all talk about it, make our recommendations next Wednesday. So, it's not definite at all, but that's the kind of...
Do you guys want to spend half of the money each round?
Each round, there are two rounds.
Oh, two rounds.
Yeah, there's another round that starts in August.
Okay. So, the Pocket Park in front of City Hall, we're gonna get that? Is that gonna be the thing that's gonna, are we gonna get that? Wait, you don't vote on it?
I don't know.
He doesn't vote.
I vote for it if somebody asks me.
OPD proposal, or, let's say, OPD proposal. And that's, that'll be like instant implementation, Nelson Nygaard edition. Thrill. I don't, I mean, that's something we discuss. And then we'll make the recommendation to the mayor, and then the mayor could guess. It'll be another month or so.
Any questions for Catherine? Just a quick update of the ZRC, the ZRC had their final meeting last Wednesday.
Do you have a party?
A little one. I'm gonna cake, Carolyn brought us a cake. And so, what's gonna happen, so the ZRC has ceased to be, there will be, they're finalizing the chair, Danny is finalizing the document that's gonna be delivered to us, which will be a letter and about a 20-page summary of certain recommendations that have come from the ZRC. And then, she's hoping to finish it this weekend, so sometime in the next meeting or two. Do we have anything, what's our, our next meeting?
We have lots of good things, permits.
We do?
What do we have?
Permits.
Our next meeting.
Subdivision, subdivision, subdivision. Yeah, we do.
Wow. But not long, you mentioned subdivision. So, the ZRC, the recommendation, so the ZRC sunset, that was the thing, they had two years, and it was sunset. And some of the recommendations are how, and what would happen going forward with the sustainability plan. If we get everything done and we have time in the next meeting, if not, we do the meeting after that. I'm not sure when we're gonna actually get the package from the ZRC.
Well, we can always work on King Street if there's time, it's in there.
I don't think we finished.
She's doing the report, I'd like to read the report before.
Yeah, they're gonna deliver a report.
I'll get it afterwards.
You guys will get the report long before the meeting, it's about...
Like, two o'clock in the afternoon?
Before the meeting, yeah, no, it'll be plenty of time. It's about 20 pages, I think, a lot of tables, so it's not a lot to read. And then, the summary letter, kind of, I think we can look for.
Does your plan to kind of reshape the whole effort to...
Not now, it's our decision what we decide to do. The ZRC itself has ceased to exist, so they have their recommendations of what we're gonna get, but it's up to us to decide how we're gonna, in what form.
What comes next.
I think you're in a hostage zone.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Actually, because we were talking about this traffic comment here, I just want to do one thing. We've been playing, we've been thinking of ways to sort of help the key. So, this is Main Street, this is Nelson Nygaard's idea for narrowing the street and setting up the City Hall Park. But one of the things we've been playing with in the SPW of what's possible to do is first, put a traffic counter in Cracker Barrel Alley to see how many people really drive down there and see what would the loss be if we didn't, if we closed that off?
Where's Cracker, sorry?
The alley across from City Hall.
Where all the tables and chairs are.
Well, the guy who parked the Mercedes.
Right. So, Nelson Nygaard suggested, why don't we take like getting rid of that, you don't really need it, and then you could become all of, you know, tables and chairs. So, what we're doing, trying to do is a traffic counter. The other thing is actually playing with, can we get Jersey barriers this summer sometime? Sort of to show people what it'd be to physically narrow the street down to 28 feet or 26 feet or something of that, that nature.
Who drew the backwards, back in parking spots?
It's not backwards, it's reversed.
Geez, they're gonna have to back here.
Locksaber.
That's reversed.
Didn't we go through this? We did a really bad study.
No, he said they just weren't done.
Are you scared? We didn't do it right.
I lived through that.
We didn't do it right, and we didn't do it right.
You gotta do it everywhere.
Yeah, don't you want to be like the cops going backwards?
Yeah, you probably...
But for the, for the Jersey barriers, we will make your park efforts.
Now, I did a suggestion about this. I read where the first trial of those, they did them wider, knowing that they would get more capacity later on, but that that was sort of like a training, just like adding training places as an idea, just for whatever that were.
You know, people are now using it as an example of how not to test back and forth. Literally, traffic consultants are using North Hampton as an example of what not to do. Glad somebody learns. But I'm just wanting, just playing, if we did an exercise, I guess, and we're sort of taking like, you know, a half-day Saturday charrette where we say, "Here's the curbs," would get people spray paint or crayons or something.
Cool.
Sort of play it.
Oh, I thought you were just saying, can the planning board go out there and put the Jersey barriers?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a new cafe with tables and we'd be there.
I mean, by the way...
So, maybe at the Pocket Park.
Yeah.
Wayne, is this, I mean, is this all part of the design that you're asking the CPC to fund? Like, the bump out?
No, no. CPC is just the City Hall Park.
Just that, yeah, backwards.
Yes, oh, now you're in this side of the street.
No, no.
Just...
Right, because it defines it, you know, it sort of starts the process.
Right. You got the bump out here, that's all.
It's also, one of the reasons that City Hall is such a great location is it's in the apex of the street, in the corner of the street. And so, from a standpoint of what's a quick low-hanging fruit to give us a different flavor for the street?
You could just put Jersey barriers around it, though. I think we need a sign, right, some, something to get people thinking, because so many people are gonna be like, what's...
Right, right.
So, I think you have to...
National security threat or something.
Or a fair little bench.
You do a photo shop.
Sign up there, whatever. Exactly. Or have a, have a page on the city's website where people can see their ideas.
But what if you think of an outdoor event, of selling Jersey barriers on a Wednesday and say, "Come on Saturday." And maybe we're bringing plastic, one furniture is the size of a real bench, and say, "Where we just go," and, you know...
That's so fun. I like that. So...
It'd be great if we could do it for the sidewalk sale thing.
Oh, I like that.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that would be nice, actually.
It'd have a whole room.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's very good. Okay, who bring you off?
I move that we adjourn.